Yes, ma'am.
I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners regular meeting for July 27, 2016. And as our custom, I'll ask that we begin the meeting with the notice. We have this evening PJ Marshall, who is a scout with Troupe 93 here in Pittsburgh, who is working on his citizenship and the community badge. And we've asked PJ if he would lead the pledge of allegiance today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America with all its expenses, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberally free and just as for all.
We have numerous members of our staff with us tonight. And I'd ask town manager Brian Gruesbeck if he would introduce everybody on the staff. Of course, we have John Bonnet, Emma Baldwin, Michael Fiocco, Beth Wilson-Foley, and Jay Farrell as board commissioners. And Mr. Gruesbeck, would you be the honors?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Of course, you're familiar with Jeff Jones, town planner. If you're not familiar with him now, you will be by the end of tonight. We're very fortunate to have, starting her first day, and hopefully she makes it to day number two after tonight, Victoria, her last name's Bayla. She is, again, starting today as what we'll call planner two. She'll, I think, be handling a lot of the detail stuff, organization, and kind of adding, I think, a lot of structure to what it is we do in the planning areas and allow Mr. Jones to deal with some higher altitude stuff. So, very fortunate to have Victoria here tonight. First, Madam Page, who is now met with us.
Three months.
Three months now. And so, Heather's our finance director and very instrumental, I think, as you're aware, in helping us put together the budget. So, again, hopefully she makes it through tonight as well. And then Chief Crutchfield, as always, in his chair. And I don't know if we have any other staff sitting or hiding in the audience. Mr. Potte has, our utilities director will be here tonight, but he had a hospital emergency to attend to, a family emergency. And then Mr. Royal, I think, is in Costa Rica, so he is not with us tonight. Thank you.
And of course, Alice Lloyd, our town clerk, who has been with the town for over 40 years. And I feel like that Paul Messick, our town attorney, has been as well.
That's right.
Is that about right?
That's right.
We have before us an agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda or anything modifying the agenda? Moved by Beth Wilson-Foley, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The motion carries unanimously. And may I ask then for a call to action on the consent agenda, which consists of four items tonight. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or is there an item that needs to be moved over to the regular agenda?
To approve the consent agenda.
Moved by John Bonnet, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Unanimously, we have approved a minute, set a public hearing for July 25, and accepted the operating budget summary report and the Main Street designation and annual agreement. We're now to the point in our agenda for public expression. We have four people signed up. Sonny Kestler would like to speak on climate change. Mr. Kestler?
I am Sonny Kestler. I live at 3006 River Fox Road. For purposes of full disclosure, I serve on the Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee. I'm speaking here tonight as a private citizen to make one major point. Chatham County, Pittsburgh, Silas City, and Goldston have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to protect Chatham County and all three municipalities from what the Church of England has described as the great demon of our day. This demon is greenhouse gas emissions and all of its consequences, including global warming, climate change, ocean acidification, and the sixth great mass extinction of life on Earth. This demon is the greatest threat facing mankind in the 21st century. That includes Chatham County. Here we might note atmospheric carbon dioxide levels now are higher than they have been in approximately four million years. How many sapiens have been on this planet? About 200,000. According to the London Zoological Society and the World Wildlife Fund, one major negative consequence of this has been a 50% decline in marine life in all of our oceans since the mid-1970s. Similar declines are occurring on land as well. In this regard, I should point out that the planet has warmed one degree Celsius since pre-industrial times, roughly 1750 to 1800. Because of delayed effects of greenhouse gas emissions, we are guaranteed to warm one additional degree Celsius over the next few decades. The question is whether we will also warm a total of four degrees Celsius by 2060 to 2070. As of now, if we continue development as usual, including here in Chatham County, we will create a four-degree Celsius warmer world, one that has been described by the World Bank as indescribably different and chaotic. Doing what we can to protect Chatham County and all three municipalities from chaotic climate change will require comprehensive land use plans, unified development ordinances, subdivision ordinances, and subdivision master plans that maximize carbon sequestration in our forest lands and our farmlands. This in turn will require a new perspective on how we govern ourselves. This perspective will require resource preservation rather than population growth and continued deforestation of Chatham County. To date, I have not seen the term "climate change" mentioned even once in the Pittsburgh Unified Development Ordinance, in the Chatham Park Master Plan, the Chatham Park Additional Elements, the Chatham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, or any similar document. If we are to protect all of Chatham County from climate change, local ordinances governing development will need to be rewritten so that the top priority is placed on adapting to a two-degree Celsius warmer world, which is inevitable, and trying to prevent a four-degree Celsius hotter world. This in turn will require much greater efforts to maximize carbon sequestration in our forest lands and our farmlands. This can be done. The question is whether it will be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't remember. Thank you. And I've already given a copy to Alice. She should go. Amanda Robertson, I live at 244 Prince Creek in Pittsburgh. Again, full disclosure, I'm also a member of the Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee and second everything Sonny just said. All of great concern to you. The earth is full. In fact, our human society and economy is now so large, we have passed the limits of our planet's capacity to support us, and it is overflowing. Our current model of economic growth is driving this system, the one we rely upon for our present and future prosperity, over the cliff. This in itself presents a major problem. It becomes a much larger challenge when we consider that billions of people are living desperate lives in appalling poverty and need their personal economy to rapidly grow to alleviate their suffering, but there is no room left. This means things are going to change, not because we will choose to change out of philosophical or political preference, but because if we don't transform our society and economy, we risk social and economic collapse and the descent into chaos. The science on this is now clear and accepted by any rational observer. Things do not look good. But despite this understanding that we would at some point pass the limits to growth, it has been continually filed away to the back of our mind and the back of our drawers with the label "interesting" for consideration later. Well, later has arrived. This is our story. It is about our world, what has been happening in it, the state it is currently in, and what is going to happen next. It is about a future we must choose. These are the words of Paul Gilding from The Great Disruption. "The environment is not a resource for us to exploit for our economic prosperity. We are nature. We are part of nature, and as we have been destroying it instead of working and harmonizing with it, exploiting it for financial gain, so too have we been destroying ourselves, exploiting ourselves, putting our very survival in jeopardy. Our town is well situated to face this crisis, the biggest crisis ever faced by humankind since our existence, because we are currently rich in natural systems. In light of this, I have a recommendation to the board and to town planner Jeff Jones regarding your memo, Chatham Park Additional Elements Review. There are modern practices of community planning we can turn to in order to ensure we are doing all we can to protect the environment we so rely on for our continued existence. In the areas of open space, tree protection, landscaping, and stormwater, I urge you to please reconsider hiring a consultant with a demonstrated expertise in preserving the natural environment within a development. These areas impact the health and economic welfare of our future and should be given the greatest consideration." I also make a request to Mayor Perry regarding the letter you wrote to our commissioners. When forming the community committee, please be inclusive. Many, perhaps most citizens of Pittsburgh and the ETJ have spoken out loudly and often to improve Chatham Park and to take greater care in its planning. Often, there have been very good reasons to slow down the process and take more time in order to improve the outcome and to be more inclusive in the process. One could argue that if you are prohibited from being considered for membership on the committee solely due to speaking out against certain aspects of the plan or because of your membership in Pittsburgh Matters, there could be a First Amendment issue that the town is discriminating against you based on the content of your speech or based on your association with Pittsburgh Matters. Freedom of speech and freedom of association are, of course, two major tenants of the U.S. Constitution. Additionally, those individuals who have spoken out at public meetings to improve the plan may be the best informed citizens to participate on this committee. It is my experience as a designer and a teacher of design that the most diverse group of people with the most diverse opinions and expertise bring about the very best results. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Watkins to speak on additional elements.
Mike Watkins, 400 Prince Creek, Pittsburgh. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Pittsburgh Matters regarding the additional elements. The additional elements, small area plans, et cetera, were to include specifications that would fulfill Chatham Park's promise of exceptional design, character, and quality. From what we've seen, the draft additional elements appear inadequate and disappointing. Pittsburgh Matters will, in the next few days, be issuing a newsletter with the details of our concerns, but here's an initial take on a few of them. Firstly, Chatham Park Investors' draft makes it clear they do not wish to build affordable housing within their upscale development. The developers prefer instead that such housing be located outside of the development, yet they still want the development credit for it, over and above the 22,000 or 23,000 residential units in the current plan. This is an indifferent affordable housing response, to put it mildly. They also wish to use undevelopable land, the steep slopes and wetlands, to meet the requirements for open space, still refusing to set aside at least 30% of the project as a natural area or forest adjacent to the whole Reverton Jordan Lake, as recommended not just by the Southwest Shore Assessment, but by the Lawrence Group, Pittsburgh Matters clearly, as well as other conservation groups. Next, despite written assertions to the contrary, they have not committed themselves to the type of compact development necessary to assure the economic viability of internal transit, nor have they committed financing, again expecting to place that burden on county taxpayers, even though the need for such transit will be due primarily to their massive new development. CPI also offers no commitment about whether they will donate part or all of the land needed for school construction. Finally, CPI likes public art, but rather than offering to fund any of it, their plan is to offer to recommend other private and public, i.e. taxpayer sources, for public art to enhance their private development. These are examples of flaws from five of the 11 additional elements submitted for review. Pittsburgh Matters will be providing more detail, critiques, and recommendations concerning all of the additional elements as the town's proposed citizen review process proceeds. There are, however, also things missing entirely, most conspicuously specific design guidelines. CPI promises exceptional design, but has yet to spell out what that means. Comprehensive impact assessments. The town cannot exercise due diligence in assessing the impacts of Chatham Park by doing piecemeal reviews of additional elements and small area plans. What's been missing from the beginning are comprehensive assessments of how the overall development might impact our environment, local economy, transportation, and several other areas. We are, however, pleased and grateful that the mayor and town board have agreed to hire independent, professional, expert consultants and to create a public citizens advisory committee to ensure a thorough, transparent review of the additional elements and all other Chatham Park plans going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leslie Landis to speak on public arts.
My name is Leslie Landis. I live at 21 Randolph Court in Pittsburgh. I'm here as an individual citizen and not a member of any board that I currently sit on. I just wanted to speak extemporaneously about the additional element of public art and go on the record as saying that Pittsburgh and Chatham County have a remarkable opportunity here with Chatham Park, not only within the development, but also with the development driving decision-making for future development within the town, to implement really incredible and impactful public art that celebrates the history and culture of Pittsburgh and of Chatham County. And successful public art in general acknowledges what this place is, what the place it is located, brings to bear across history culturally, environmentally. And so, for the record, I want to just note that off the top of my head there, Chatham County is the county of three rivers, and we have David Fanning, and we have some remarkable people on local historical markers who should be recognized and celebrated and folded into the place that is Chatham Park and Pittsburgh to make educational opportunities and to make the future of this place through the arts and architecture and public expressions of creativity more well-known and have more opportunities for celebrating it into the future. I'm so sorry I didn't have my remarks planned out, but I did just want to say that because I think that we have an incredibly rich history and culture and that laying that on top of future development through arts and architecture is an incredible opportunity that we have, and I hope that we will seize the day. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our public expression speakers. And we'll go next then to commissioner update. My sense was that we would be thinking as we continued into the next few meetings about people that we would like to serve on the advisory community committee, whatever we want to call it. And John Bonnet had made the suggestion that we need to submit some advertising for people who might be interested in serving on that committee and create a deadline and a timeline for the appointment of the committee so it could move forward as quickly as possible. I think some of us have already been approached, I certainly have been, with people volunteering their expertise on various parts of the committee, and for that, I'm absolutely thrilled. So then let us submit this to advertising with a deadline. We may not be able to do that before the next meeting, but certainly in July, we should be able to, towards the end of July, be able to submit some of the names for the committee. I also need suggestions for you all about the number of people, whether we want to do two apiece or three apiece. We talked about the committee being something which is manageable in size, but also that would be spread among the areas of expertise in the additional elements. So, keeping that in mind, perhaps 12, 15, does that sound like what everybody's thinking?
Two apiece would be good, but the element would be unmanageable or untouchable.
I think if the committee gets too large, then people aren't always engaged, and the list goes down.
All right.
I had a thought about, I miss the background folks' expertise, just in a generic sense, but I would like to see, I came up with 17. So, I'm not sure. Maybe we can meet the middle.
Okay. Well, let us be thinking about the areas of expertise we want to cover. Jeff Jones had given us a chart which indicated those areas that he thought were substantively ordinance-oriented, which would be drier and not perhaps yielding to community input as much as the artistic side of things, the arts, the affordable housing, the open space, those things that we've all heard comment on as we have served or run for public office. And so, let us hone our ideas in that fashion and then submit advertising for. It would be interesting to see what kind of response we get from advertising positions as well. That may help guide us in the number of people we want on the committee.
Madam Mayor, who is going to prepare the requirements for the ad? Do you want us to do that, or do you want to do that?
That would be excellent if you all would, yes. We have a number of committees that have met in the interim since our last time. Is there anybody that needs to report on downtown PBA, Triangle J, Main Street?
No. I mean, Congress first.
Climate change? And let us move to our judicial, quasi-judicial public hearing is next on the agenda. I need a motion to go into public hearing. Michael Fiocco moves.
Second.
And Jay Farrell second. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We're looking at then Jeff Jones, the special use permit request from Chatham County Schools, from Northwood High School specifically for an additional mobile unit. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And members of the board. We do have Chatham County Schools represented here, and Madam Mayor, if we could get sworn in prior to giving testimony tonight.
And the only person who we have signed up for this public hearing is Chris Lights.
Chris, will you be the only one speaking tonight?
No, actually, there'll be three of us.
Three of us, so we'll amend that speaker's list and have all four of us come up.
All right then. If those wishing to speak would stand for the other, please.
Are you okay if they stand in their current positions? Okay, stay back there.
You're welcome to stay where you are. And raise your hand and say aye, and then state your name.
Aye.
Jeff Jones.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That the evidence I shall give.
The evidence I shall give.
To the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners.
To the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners.
In the case to be heard.
In the case to be heard.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, for swearing us in tonight.
Rules of procedure indicate that at this evidentiary hearing, the town staff, Mr. Jeff Jones will present sufficient detail, and then the applicant shall speak on his request with supporting evidence, and then any other important stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, the local town board. We have a request for a six-classroom modular building to be located at Northwood High School, which is located along Northwood High School Road, which is adjacent to 15501. Our current zoning ordinance gives a little latitude as to what types of projects come back before you special use permits. Schools, academic schools, are a special use permit in all zoning districts within our zoning ordinance. And it's staff's opinion that the increasing population at Northwood High School warranted a public discussion as to that increasing population and gives the applicant, Chatham County Schools, the ability to answer any questions that the board may have of the area. So, the request is to locate a second modular unit adjacent to the first one, and that's the general layout for the unit. And as you'll hear from tonight, the applicant is also proposing to do a temporary gravel driveway, and I can answer questions as to how that is permitted by the ordinance and not have to be paved. And this is a rendering of what the mobile unit would look like. The applicant will give testimony as to the temporary nature of the unit. I can answer any questions that you all may have of the process. This was noticed in the paper. Letters were sent out, and the property was posted according to state legislature, state statutes. Any questions of the staff before we get into the applicant's request?
I've got one question. You mentioned in your write-up that you feel the plan needs to go through a full review.
So, the full review is coming before you all for a public hearing process through the planning board for a recommendation, and then back to this board on the 25th of July for a decision. There could have been a decision made that we just approved the permit as requested through a zoning compliance certification. I believe that the ordinance gives staff some latitude into saying yes or no to that request and bringing this to the board for a full review, and that's what it's meant by full review and not just a staff-level review. We have met multiple times with the applicant, myself, town engineer, public works director, so we've been involved with the project. Part of the project that's not necessarily up for discussion tonight, but why public works director and engineer have been involved is getting the pump station upgraded and permits corrected for that. That'll be at your July 25 meeting, and we'll have some information on that. And so, that's sort of where we stand.
I don't want to go too far afield here, but I heard you say that there was a staff discretion as to whether or not the staff should approve a special use permit.
It would have then been deemed not a special use permit. It would have just been a continuation of a permit that was already established and a minor modification to that permit is allowable for staff to approve. And this could have been a minor amendment, but I felt like it was time to have the school system maybe come and give us system maybe come and give us some ideas on their growth, and let you all know and the public know as to how many students they plan on having at their facility over the next five years, and be able, time for you all to be able to ask any questions of the school system.
Thank you.
Horizon population of students, will we need to address any wastewater or water issues?
Yeah, there will be a request at the 25th meeting for that.
All right.
You have the applicant come up there, hesitation's ready.
Good evening, my name is Mike Hammersley, and I'm with CRA Associates, and we're assisting the school with this special use permit. Tonight with me from the school system are Chris Blythe and Randy Drumheller, that you'll hear from as well. I just thought I'd start off and give you a little background into what is the plan itself entails, and then they will go on to discuss the schools, you know, the school itself and how that works. So what we're requesting is a part, as Jeff alluded to, is we're looking at putting a modular unit out east of the existing building, and next to a modular unit that was put there is MAP classroom buildings. These six classrooms have associated restrooms, and again, it's the same site plan that Jeff had up earlier. The units will have the classrooms and the restrooms contained in one building. They are temporary, and the site itself has already been set up for this unit some years back. There's already a pad out there. The area's already cleared. There won't be any clearing of trees or anything else. It's already a grassed area that's out there. And additionally, as Jeff mentioned, we're looking at putting some gravel parking adjacent to the modular unit, and this area is adjacent to existing gravel parking, so we would be expanding that as well. So the footprint is very compact, and we'll extend sidewalks, of course, from the existing schools so the students can get to the modular units off the end. Two different locations off the sidewalk that goes out to the modular unit now, and one off the east end of the building and out to the new units. So there'll be good access, and then the utilities will be connected through and into the existing utilities that are already out on the site. And so everything will be done very compact in that same area. So I'm here to answer anything related to the site, or we're requesting to do anything about the plan and how we would do it, and then I'm going to turn it over to the school, but if you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them, but I'm going to let them give you their information as well.
Are there any questions on the board at this time?
Mike, does the MST have any thoughts?
Who's the?
NCDOT.
We've been working with NCDOT. We work with them on everything that we do. We look at, whenever we're doing anything at a school, we look at talking to them about internal, you know, flow of traffic, as you know, drop-offs, pickups, how best to deal with that, and there have been a lot of discussions with them internally on those kinds of things, as well as the staff of the district, the district engineer's office on the lights and what's happening on 15501.
And we'll actually
And Chris is going to talk at length about some of that stuff, but yes, we've been in constant contact with DOT.
Okay. Does the district engineer have some discretion as to whether or not it goes to this special agency within DOT's specific
That's right.
looking at traffic issues associated with schools?
Yeah, and they do a really nice job of helping you internally to a school site, separating buses and cars and students so that you get a better, you know, drop-off, pickup flow on-site, very helpful, and we look for their help very often. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to Chris. Thanks, Madam Mayor, for your questions.
Thank you. Chris Blythe?
All right. Well, I am Chris Blythe, and I'm the chief operations officer for the district. These are just hard copies of the PowerPoint. And we've actually already looked at our first two slides, so you know what our background is, and what we're requesting is to temporarily place, it's a five-year lease, a six-classroom modular unit on the school site, and to create some additional parking in the form of a gravel parking lot. A piece of that that we'll be coming back later, as Mr. Jones mentioned, is to look at the sewer allocation as well for the campus. You've seen the site plan. So our next slide, if we can go there, is asked a question, well, why do we want to temporarily add this? Projected opening of the new high school that we're building, which will be in the northeast, and will come primarily from the Northwood attendance zone, is projected for August of 2021. Northwood is presently at 1,326 students and is projected to be at 1,578 the year before we get to the opening of the new school. By the way, over 100 of that student population will come from Chatham Park, and that's where we'll start to see the initial impact from Chatham Park, which is right across the street from Northwood, as we all know. And in our early plans, we're projecting that those students will go across the street to Northwood for high school. All right, so we're already going to seeing their impact at that point. The six additional classrooms will create the needed classroom space that we'll have to get to the point that we open the new school. Northwood's student population at that point will begin to drop once the new high school opens, and I say will begin to drop because our board still has to make some decisions on how they'll phase the new high school in. Typically, when you open a new high school, you generally open it with freshmen and sophors, and you give your juniors and seniors the opportunity to finish their high school career where they've already started. But those are decisions that our board has yet to make. But assuming then, we're building the school for 1,000 students, coring it for 1,200, assuming that our target population at opening, and again, that's a question that the board will decide, is 900 students, we can project what that impact will be on Northwood. Projected growth has the school falling back by August of 2023 to 1,000 to 1,100 students, so it will drop a fair amount. In fact, that will take it back to its brick-and-mortar capacity, which is why we would like this modular unit to be temporary, and we'd like for it to go away at that point, because if we need to build an addition to the school later on, we're going to need that footprint to build the addition in. So that's why we want this to be temporary. All right, next slide, please. So why create additional parking with a gravel parking lot? The town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance indicates the need right now for approximately 450 parking spaces. Our current site configuration includes only 386, including 93 spaces that are located in an existing gravel lot, or existing gravel lots, because there's actually two areas that have gravel on. So we need more parking now. Adding this lot will give us the ability to get to the point that we've opened the new high school, and things will drop back. Now, a side part of that will be, if we can have more of our kids driving to school, we will reduce the queue line in the morning, because the problem isn't so much people going in and parking and staying, it's people going in, dropping off, and coming back out that puts the traffic back out on the road. So these kids will come in and park, and right now, we need the spaces. In fact, if you know that I was the former principal at Northwood, I can tell you that when I was there, we needed more parking spaces because we sold out and had a waiting list. All right, so the projected growth, again, after 2023, may require a brick-and-mortar addition to Northwood sometime around 2026, and again, we'll need the space to do something of more permanent nature, so this piece, we're thinking gravel lots, they'll be faster cheaper, but they'll meet the need, and then we can do it when we put the addition back on the school. All right, the next slide shows you what happens to the population. Now, this is the population for the Northwood High School attendance zone, including Chatham Park. About halfway down the chart, you'll see an area that's shaded, and that's where the new high school begins to open. So while those numbers continue to grow, they're not all going to be at Northwood. In fact, Northwood is going to fall off pretty quickly, and by the time we get to the 2023, 24-year, only 1,000 of those kids, 1,000 to 1,100 of those kids, will still be at Northwood. So you see those numbers fall off pretty quickly, but then they start to grow again. And in fact, by the time we get to the end of the chart, we will have 343 students from Chatham Park, according to our projections, will be back at Northwood, and Northwood will be back close to where they are now at 1,300. There'll be actually 12-something that last year, and then they will grow again and correspondingly come up, so there'll be over 1,300, actually, the year after the chart ends is our projection. Now, I need to say, those are projections at this point, and they're a good ways out, but they're based on data that we get from ORED, which is the gold standard in student population projections across the state. They're based at NC State. We have a longstanding relationship with them, and they have reviewed the information that we got from Chatham Park, and blessed it, and added it into our figures, and I can certainly give you those charts if you'd like to see the full packet that they give us each year. We can share that with you. Okay? All right, the next slide touches on a conceptual drawing, and I'm going to let Mr. Drumheller talk with you about this.
Madam Chair, members of the board. The conceptual drawing is a drawing that our independent traffic consultant created when we were approached by Chatham Park with the 15501 exchange. This is just conceptual at this stage, and it provides a second entryway north from the current entryway, right here. So there are exchanged lanes, providing a stoplight up there, and another entryway that we see at this time as being bus and car rider traffic separating student traffic. Again, this is conceptual. I'm sure there'll be some things worked out as we go, but Chatham Park, in a letter to the Board of Education, has agreed to this drawing, or a version of it, also based on their developments on the east side of the road and the south side of Northwood. DOT has also reviewed this and blessed it. You mentioned, next slide, please. You mentioned a minute ago about a DOT. This, we had the survey done in 2014 for the queue line, traffic pattern, flow rate for internal traffic by MST. Did not see a need to do it right now, given as you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, we had 325 students when this was done. I mean, 1,300. We have 1,326 now, it was our beginning of the year, APM, or end of the year, APM is 1,300 even. So this was the study done by DOT in 2014, we had 1,325 students.
So MST felt that was sufficient
Yes. This is their problem.
Yeah, I can see that.
Oh, okay, right.
So they felt that was sufficient for this expansion?
Not for this expansion, that was sufficient then, when we had 1,325 students. We, I asked them to come in, do an analysis, make sure that we're okay. They felt that the pattern that's laid out there was sufficient. We did some changes with road signage and driveways to meet their criteria, and that's where we're at today. This plan's been implemented.
The expansion will span 252 students?
In five years, yes. We'll have to address this again as time goes on, as we see our queue line going down further, but it gets addressed consistently with DOT, as we see ourselves having problems in parking lots and backing up, and our queue lines getting slower.
And if I may, DOT, and we've had several conversations with them, this has been an ongoing thing for us. When I came to Northwood in 2008, there was between 800 and 900 students at Northwood, and we had traffic then. The school's grown substantially since then. This past year, on a day that we were meeting with DOT, and DOT tells us that our peak time is primarily in the morning, between 7:30 and 8:05, and that those are the, that's the time when, if there's going to be an issue, that's when it'll happen, because without the school, the intersection is busy already because people are going north and south on 15501 toward Orange County and toward Pittsburgh. So the road just naturally has a fair amount of traffic on it. The morning, the last morning that we met with them, actually, not the last morning, it was the morning before that, that we met with them, I was out at the school at 7:30, sitting in the left-hand turn lane, coming down the hill from Lowe's. I made it in and out of the school four times before 8:05, and I rode the whole pattern and pulled up to drop off a student and stopped, just like the cars in front of me were. And I got in and out four times with no trouble, and I did it from both sides. The first time, I came from Pittsburgh, the second time, I came from Chapel Hill, the third time back from Pittsburgh, and the fourth time out of Chapel Hill. And I didn't have any trouble getting in and out, and the line never backed up to 15501. In fact, if I could get on the Northwood campus, I never stopped. I kept moving. The problem isn't on the Northwood campus, the problem is out on 15501, and it's just because of the amount of traffic that the road is sustaining at that point in the morning.
And concerning MST, when the second entry gets put in, 15501 is wide, DOT will be involved in that, I mean, they're required to give us, to go through that second entry and make recommendations and programs. And that second entry is currently listed on Chatham Park's DIA and has been submitted to DOT. All right, next slide.
All right, so in summary, we need to pursue temporarily adding classroom space to Northwood to get us to the fall of 2021 and projected opening of the new high school. To achieve the goal, we intend to lease a used six-classroom modular unit for five years, and then it will go away, and they'll come and get it and take it away. And frankly, we want it to go away because if we decide to put an addition on Northwood because of the growth that we believe will be coming back, although again, that's the second five years of a 10-year projection. We feel better about the first five years in that projection than we do about the second, but as we go through the first five, we'll monitor that and watch it, and if we need to change our plans, we will. But we'll add the modular unit temporarily, and then we'll add temporary parking to, by creating the gravel lot. Both the unit and the gravel lot are anticipated to go away by the time the new high school fully opens, which will be the fall of 2023. And important to note, neither of these requests will attract additional students to Northwood. Whether we put the six-classroom unit there or not, the kids are still coming. This doesn't generate more students. I likened it to someone, I said, it's not apartments, where you build apartment buildings and you attract people to come. They're coming whether we have the classroom space for them or not. I guess what we'll have to do is put them in the cafeteria or in the gym. We don't want to do that. We want to give them classrooms and stop flooding as many teachers, and start giving them homes of their own. We still got the capacity, or we'll have the capacity to get there, and then we'll be able to make the decision about is it time to put an addition on the school. So that's it. So we're here for questions.
Questions from the board?
So I'll take Dick away. I don't envy your challenges here, and I think what I'm gathering is that you're proposing a temporary fix to current population density problems on the campus and anticipated natural growth with the mobile classroom and the gravel lot. And then there's also a proposal to add a second entrance?
That will be from Chatham Park as a part of their plan for the 15501 corridor, and they've agreed as a part of that to build something similar to the conceptual drawing that you saw.
Okay, all right. And your hope and expectation is that that's going to address much of the problems out on fifteen-five-oh-one that have been associated with traffic to the school, but is also traffic north and south?
Primarily because of the north and south traffic, but yes, sir. We do believe that.
Part of our traffic consulting.
Okay, that's helpful.
And DOT will be a part of that.
So some of my questions had to do with the building, but knowing that it's an existing used piece of equipment eliminates those questions. I was going to ask about cost of ownership, maintenance of the facility, heating and air conditioning, efficiency, but that's kind of moot. However, with the addition of a gravel parking lot, I always try and be mindful of the fact that stormwater, impervious surfaces do have their impacts and will be in future affecting our own drinking water. And I've been told by soil scientists that an actual paved surface is only about five to ten percent more impervious than a gravel lot. Because gravel lots are typically compacted, they run off almost just as much water as paved surfaces. But have you put any thought and preparation into stormwater impacts?
At this point, we are limiting, as I talked earlier, about the compact nature of the site, that we're building on an area that's already prepared and all, so we don't have to disturb a lot of new area. And that's kind of our approach right now, staying under the guideline requirements. So we're not putting any new permanent stormwater features in. Again, being temporary facility, we eventually will be removing it, so we'll restore the area back, so that's the approach we're taking.
Okay.
What is the wastewater at that site? Is it treated on-site in a package plan, or is it connected?
No, it's actually, goes to a pump station and then is pumped to the Pittsburgh treatment gallon. And that's why we'll be coming back on the twenty-fifth and making that formal request for you to allocate additional gallons for us, for the school.
I don't really have a question, but I do appreciate this information, it's very useful. You answered most of the questions that I did have, which was why you were going to do the mobile units and all of that. So that does answer quite a few questions. Is Northwood currently overcapacity?
We consider overcapacity to be over brick-and-mortar capacity. And in that regard, brick-and-mortar capacity for the school is a thousand twenty-five, so we're clearly over that. However, we do have seven individual classroom units and eight classroom pods on the campus. So when you're looking at it from that perspective, we're right on the area, we're sort of right on the edge of it. But we consider overcapacity to be brick-and-mortar. The official answer is yes.
Mr. Ballis, this is a one-unit modular, and you have six classrooms in it?
Yes, sir.
What size classrooms, Olivia? For the curiosity I did.
They're actually the same size as pretty much the standard classrooms that you build now?
Twenty-four. And it's the same as a single mobile unit, but they package them all, so they're all in one roof, one hallway, you know, one set of bathrooms, it serves all six classrooms.
And what is the timeframe on this new access road? Do you have any idea?
The TIA that's been issued to DOT has twenty-hundredteen, that's the...
And one other question, will that home that's on the end of that property, will it stay there?
It's going away. We've actually sold it to a house mover who will be coming to take it away.
I actually framed that house my senior year, so sure it is.
Did you help with the brick?
No, just to frame it.
Just to frame it?
To frame it up, yeah.
I think George Braxton did the brickwork.
Yeah. It's been a while. It's a good sound house, I can tell.
Yes, sir. Still is.
That's good. Anytime we help schools, I'm all for it.
Other questions from the board?
We estimate the timeframe for construction.
For the modular unit?
Well, for the project.
The modular unit set up this summer and ready to go in August is our plan. We're actually, Mr. Jones has been gracious enough to give us a letter to move forward, and we'll have the gravel lot done by the start of school as well. Yeah, said this summer.
The Chatham County permitting office has agreed to issue you the permit and take our chances with you guys.
They have a need to go ahead and get the structure on-site, and Brian and I felt like it was appropriate to go ahead and issue a letter to the Chatham County Building to say that we're okay if they assume the risk that they may not get approved. And I'm going to have that letter for them after this meeting tomorrow, and then they can submit that to the county. County says they will issue a building permit, it will be inspected just like it normally would be. The CO will be ready for, once you approve it at the end of July, and everything will fall right into place.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
And so I'm just asking you all to recommend this move to the planning board for their recommendation next week.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion made by Pamela Baldwin, second by Beth Wilson Fuller. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We need a... Thank you. Michael Fioco moves, and Pamela Baldwin second. Motion to go out of public hearing for cause of judicial matters. There are motions to go in to public hearing for legislative matters, the difference being that one is evidentiary and the other is not. Michael Fioco moves, Jay Farrell second. The motion to go into legislative public hearing. And Jeff Jones is going to tell us about a request to rezone three oh-six West Street.
Actually, the address is six oh-three West Street. It was transposed on the agenda and on the slide, but the staff report has six oh-three West Street. This is, location is in red. It's a long West Street going out of Pittsburgh toward Siler City. That's near the intersection of eighty-seven and Business sixty-four. The request is to rezone point seven-one acres of land that is currently zoned R-ten. You can see that on the map on the screen. As you can tell, the adjacent properties to the east and across the street, those parcels are zoned highway commercial, which is what the request from the applicant is, is to zone this piece of property to C-two highway commercial. It is bounded to the south by an R-ten residential subdivision, and to the west is a row of R-ten lots that front West Street as well. To my recollection that I can find that this parcel has been zoned since the late eighties, R-ten, and the future land use map has this area designated, and it's hard to tell because the future land use map, we don't have parcel lines on it, which is a little strange, and something that we will correct one day. But generally, the intersection of eighty-seven and sixty-four appears to have a commercial designation. And so the staff's opinion that it is appropriate in this location to have highway commercial as it's adjacent to two major highways in town and at a major intersection. So staff is recommending that we approve this when we get to that point at the end of July. We don't anticipate any population changes and no normal transportation patterns at this time is known, and I can answer any questions that you have. The applicant is here as well, and...
Is this where the mid-century modern house is?
I think the applicant can definitely speak to that, as I believe that you may be correct.
Any questions for staff? If not, Shannon Plummer is the only person signed up for the to speak here at public hearing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me approach you tonight. My name is Shannon Plummer, I live at thirteen thirty Long Barn Road. If you won't, I'll just tell you my thoughts on this whole process and why we're here tonight. As much of you know, I ran the diner for approximately twenty years now. Over time, I've been able to acquire additional two properties there. And just to give you a little history lesson, some of you already know it, but the second property behind the diner was originally Miss McCollum's home. It was a schoolteacher, and she actually sold the front portion to Hazel Farrell to build Carolina Fried Chicken, I think in nineteen seventy-two. Some of you guys can remember actually, but that's originally how that happened. And then the Lustron home that you were referring to, that she actually cut that off and built it for her son, Carl McCollum. And some of y'all remember Carl McCollum. Things didn't work out, and the daughter-in-law wound up with the property, and then eventually the grandsons, and I was able to buy it from Judith McCollum in two thousand eleven, the third property, subject property that we're talking about. And a funny thing, over time, as I've tried to rent the property out, people approached me and want to put commercial things in there, which is interesting. I thought, wow, people just assume. You know, I've had someone want to put a hair salon in there. Had someone that made handmade quilts and blankets and wanted to have, you know, a shop in there to actually manufacture or make them and then sell them. So it's kind of got my squirrels turning, thinking, well, this kind of lends itself to commercial use. But, you know, I also want to make a point that I am requesting C-two. Why? Because the other two properties that I own are C-two. I think that it's conducive for, you know, highway commercial, as the staff here has also alluded to. And if you really think about this from the courthouse, let's just go from the courthouse back to this property, every piece is zoned commercial. I think you have one non-conformant piece, which is O and I, that some residents are living in, and if I'm mistaken, if anybody knows, you can tell me. So I would suggest that it lends itself that it's Business sixty-four, it's Highway sixty-four business. You know, that would lend to think that this should be a commercial area. The corner where I'm at, and I've been blessed with a great business, and most of you folks have eaten with me at one time or another, and if you haven't, I guarantee somebody you know has, is, depending on how you interpret the traffic map, the volume map, a lot of people like to just add the two numbers. I think y'all know, most of you, that you can't do that, it's accumulated. But it's either the third or fourth busiest intersection in the town of Pittsburgh. So my question would be like, if you're going to allow commercial property to be somewhere, where would you suggest that it be located? Obviously, the first, second busiest intersection, which is fifteen-five-oh-one and sixty-four and five-oh-one up by the school we're just talking about. And then the next two would be on the Monqueiro, fifteen-five-oh-one, and then the corner where the diner's located. Those are the highest traffic volume locations. So anyway, that's why I'm making this request. I've been there for twenty years, and this shouldn't affect your decision, but you know, there's always a human element to these things. And most people don't realize, my wife and I have been running this restaurant, there's nobody else in this town, even you, Commissioner Farrell, that has been in the restaurant business twenty years. There's been five owners in burly's, my dad included in the twenty-year period. The Roadhouse has had a couple of different owners. Even Hardee's, which predates House Diner, but Hardee's has gone from a franchisee to being corporately owned and then back to a franchisee. So theoretically, I'm the longest-running restaurant in this town, and my point being is I'm getting tired, and my wife's getting tired. And I'm forty-six years old, and there's time to do something else. Maybe come to more of these meetings, I really do love this stuff. I might even, even after this is over, I'm going to go over there and see it because I've had the agenda and I'm interested. But, and I enjoyed serving on the planning board, but I'm getting tired, and I've been approached by a couple of people. So, and I want to be transparent about that. There's people, because of Chatham Parks, there's people interested in the town of Pittsburgh. You know, I know that there's this fear that everyone is going to suck the life out of Pittsburgh and everybody's going to go to Chatham Parks. It's just not true from what I'm seeing. And there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of, I don't even know if y'all are aware, but there's a lot of commercial properties changing hands under contract right now. I don't know if y'all know, but I'm a real estate broker, so I kind of keep in tune with that stuff. And then I pull up tonight and see Willie's Funeral Home, which has been there forever, and it's for sale. It's going to become something else. And you know, one thing I learned, well, somebody told me this a long time ago, and I didn't get it because I was too young, but the only thing in life that's constant is change. And it's absolutely true, and the older we get, the more we realize that, I think. So, you know, you guys consider this application, you consider what's best for the town. But I will say this, if I have three parcels and someone was to approach me about redevelopment, because it would go over an acre, I think it would give you a little bit more control mechanisms and more, like stormwater and things of that nature, so you would actually have a little bit more control. Of course, you'd have control through this site plan application as well. It's not, it's not for sale, I don't have anybody in my back pocket, I don't want you to think that, but I'm getting tired, and as these people approach me, it's, you know, it's something for me to consider. Now, nothing may transpire, and I may run the restaurant for ten more years. And what would I do? I would continue to rent this out. But I will say this about the Lustron, and if any of y'all have never investigated the story of the Lustron home, you should just Google it in your spare time. Amazing story, full of politics, lobbyists from Washington DC, federal bureaucracy. It should be a movie. There's only like sixteen hundred of these homes left. That one's fully intact, all the pieces are there, it's really cool. I will not allow it to be destroyed. I won't. If I have to give it to somebody...
I know you tried, I know you worked with...
Yeah, I've talked to several people, and I still have their names and numbers, but before I would let someone demolish it, I would make sure that it's going somewhere to be restored, because all the pictures are there. There's only like sixteen hundred of them left in the country. Only about twelve hundred of them are occupied.
Two of them are there.
Yeah, there's two, it's amazing, yeah. Yeah, it's amazing. There's, I think there's twenty-two in North Carolina, something like that. But anyway, please Google that story if you guys like architecture.
I actually wrote a blog about it.
Yeah, I'll look it up, I haven't seen that. But, yeah.
That house on the corner, too, is a nice historical house, and maybe if you did decide to build that property, that it could be moved.
Absolutely. I would certainly be open to that. And, yeah, so I'm happy to answer any questions. I've just kind of told you my thoughts, I didn't really have prepared remarks or anything to hand you, but just kind of speaking off the cuff, but, thank you. Any questions or any...
Other questions for the applicant?
Shannon, I really appreciate you sharing your thoughts candidly with us.
Sure.
And I also appreciate your apparent passion for that structure. My grandfather, I'm told, built the first one in Greensboro, the first Lustron.
Oh, really?
In Greensboro. And, yeah, so they're a little piece of history, and it's really good when we can hold on to our history. But I think I understand that historic structures like that are far more likely to, economically to get restored under commercial zoning, because there are federal incentives for businesses or corporations to restore structures, or maybe it's the state tax credit is only still available to corporations, not to individual families or individual taxpayers. But, yeah, I just wanted to share those thoughts with you and appreciate your sharing candidly with us as well.
Yes, sir.
And share with you my concern for the eventual preservation of that building.
That's the Westchester model, I made three different models. And Virginia Faust helped me, if any of you guys know her, that she serves on like an architectural committee in Raleigh. And she tried to help me find, supposedly there weren't any tax credits, there were some tax credits, but it wasn't quite old enough to receive the tax credits, because it's like a nineteen fifty model. I think forty-eight, forty-nine fifty, or three years they made it before the frame-built lobby crushed him and put him out of business. But, yeah, I'd be open to any of that, I certainly will research that. I didn't know that as far as commercially zoned.
I'm not an expert, but that's what I've been told.
Yeah, I will definitely be looking at it.
Some nice trees on that property, too, if I remember correctly.
There are some huge trees. I would argue maybe some of the largest trees in Pittsburgh. But they're dangerous, too, a lot of leaves are fallen, and they've had to have some tree work done. But they are, they're big trees.
Any further questions?
Shannon, I'm really happy to hear you say that you enjoy these meetings, miss you on the planning board.
Sure.
So I'm looking for your application for the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I'm waiting for that to come out of the cusp, I'm waiting for these trees.
I can't believe it's been twenty years.
Yeah, well, it'll be twenty in January, it's been, I believe, twenty years this January. And, you know, my dad was there twelve years prior. I don't know if y'all realize, that was Stacy's diner. And Al is my, was my smallest son at the time, my oldest boy, Alex. It's just a quick story. All throughout high school, he wanted to take over the diner, he wanted to build a new McNamara's diner. I said, that's great, son, but let's just go to college, you want to go chef school? I said, no, let's please get a four-year degree, go to school and get a college degree, and then come home and we'll do this. But two years in, he calls me, he had a damn change of mind, I want to be a pilot. So he's about to graduate with a degree in aviation. So he's not going to take over the diner. You see my, admire that I'm in? Okay.
I do appreciate you telling us all of this, and that you will help put a little stay in the restaurant business. There's no restaurant I know where I can just drive up and they have my food ready.
They say you come in at the light and they start on it.
They do, they do, it's great.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I thought so, friendly there, it's just such a pleasure to be with everybody so friendly.
Well, thank you very much. I've enjoyed it, it's been great.
Make a motion that we send this to planning board for the renovation.
Thanks. Moved by Michael Fierko, seconded by Pamela Baldwin, to move this on to the planning board for July. And those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I think we need a motion to go out of legislative public hearings.
Second.
Moved by Michael Fierko, seconded by John Vonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now in Old Business for a site plan review for AutoZone, Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. We do have site plans, twenty sixteen oh four for AutoZone. It's, proposed location is at the corner of Rock Springs Church Cemetery Road and fifteen five oh one. This parcel is part of the Powell Place mixed-use plan development. And this is the site plan. Proposed is a seven thousand, seven thousand three hundred and eighty-one square foot, one-story retail space for AutoZone. Again, it would be located there at the corner, there's a right-in, right-out off of fifteen five oh one, and the engineer can talk more about that. And then there's a full access drive off of Rock Springs Church Road and the adjacent property, so it'll be a shared driveway between this parcel and future development in Powell This was five-zero recommendation to approve at the planning board meeting that was held in early June. And some of the questions that the planning board had at the time was how does it fit in with the mixed-use plan development for Powell Place, and then vehicle and pedestrian movement along the site. And internally, they are proposing sidewalks along their frontage and the frontage on Rock Springs Church Cemetery Road. And generally, thought that the plan met the intent of the mixed-use designation for Powell Place. This is the elevations for AutoZone, it's the all masonry building with some ethos along the front or along the top for where AutoZone will be. One of the questions was location of the entry door, and it's sort of in that northeast corner area. So if you're coming from, let's say, the high school down into Pittsburgh, you'll see the entry to your right coming down. And that'll be that glass area right there. As I said, the applicant is here and can answer any questions that the board may have. Water and sewer is available to the property, and staff is recommending approval. Any questions?
I have just one, as I reviewed the plans, it said that we're, removal of concrete, and now is that, is that tied in on the hydro...
It's not part of hydro, too, but maybe the engineer can speak to if there's any current improvements on the property, though, a little bit removed.
Good evening, my name's Matt Lauter, I'm a triangle site designer, engineer for the project. Really, it's just a wooded lot right now, I'm not sure, we're not part of the hydrant plant that was there, there's slight scarring, just wooded area, some open space.
There is some utilities, gas, and overhead lines that sort of run in this area here, that's why there's a sort of jog against the sidewalk, still accommodating for a light pole there. And some of the other utilities that are in that, right there.
Is there still a plan to make kind of like dead-end entrances that would connect potentially with adjacent properties?
Yeah, Matt can speak to it, but there's a cross-access drive, and then there's another drive.
Yes, we have had discussions with DSC, so they are going to allow this to be a right-in, right-out driveway to serve this site. But we also have a couple of access points in terms of Powell Place, one being at this spot, with our front parking, so they can access their site, as well as an access road. Actually, AutoZone property, there's really few of them are accessing this one. And this way, we'll go back towards the back of the site as well, just provide for access to go to the west as well. So there is ample opportunity for cross-access, and will be a part of, the DSC allowing us to have a right-in, right-out, just to have ample, because there won't be another driveway up fifteen five oh one more than this, I guess I'm sharing what I hear.
And I'm trying to remember what I think I learned in the planning board hearing, maybe I'm confusing the project. Stormwater is to be managed off-site?
Correct, we are within the Powell Place development, and there is stormwater provided for as part of Powell Place. Unfortunately, where we are is a good distance away from the developed area of Powell Place. And instead of piping or taking stormwater from one point to the other with a lot of unknowns in between, the owner has actually decided to build a temporary, permanent stormwater facility. It's designed like a permanent facility would be, it may stay once the rest of Powell Place is developed, but it could be removed as well, and the stormwater could go to where it has been designed to before. So it's kind of a temporary, permanent solution, but one way or another, the stormwater will be finished on the site.
You mean on the adjacent site, where there's a drain adjustment, a pump?
Correct, this is a...
Can we show that?
We're still dividing this parcel out of about a seven, eight acre parcel. Right, there we go.
They're going to change that current phasen, where that's going to stay.
Our problem is there's a stream that runs, you know, if we drain into the stream, it would go around the existing stormwater facility. So by treating it here, it can go where it's naturally going now into the stream after it's been treated versus trying to pipe it parallel to the stream. Because stormwater fine is taking this area, so there's a lot of undeveloped land in between, and unnecessary piping.
I'm sorry, I thought I remembered that this is a phasen.
That's a temporary erosion control measure from when they were doing some of the home site. It's not a, ours is more of a permanent measure, that's just a trap set a minute.
That's a heavily wooded lot, as I recall. Is there any chance that any of those trees will be saved?
Unfortunately, not on our portion of it, perhaps in future portions of it. And Jeff did mention, we do have some utilities that we're already dealing with, some overhead utilities, there's a gas regulators, we'll do everything on the site. You know, obviously, we'll be landscaping back, but not preserving any trees that are on that corner, based on this plan.
That just amplifies why we need our tree protection. Questions?
Matt, has Powell Place reviewed approval?
Yes.
Jeff, does the Powell Place sewer allocation cover this parcel?
It will cover.
Okay.
So we're tracking that with the Powell Place allocation. So whatever they need will roll out off of that, the overall number is kept.
The pond that you mentioned is, it looks like it's in position to treat several parcels, is that the intent?
Yes, it's going to treat the proposed AutoZone site, but also the rest of the area outlined in red. And that's just, again, it's a separate owner from Powell Place, and they're part of the development, just gives them some flexibility short-term to go ahead and develop the rest of their portion, and then, you know, when enough area in between is developed, they can remove it or choose to keep it there. But it's designed to be a permanent measure.
So is that in the Powell Place homeowners association will be maintaining that place?
No, this will be owned and maintained by the property owner. It'll be separate from the Powell Place community, it's just, it's here to treat him and not Powell Place as a whole.
Which owner?
The owner of the area in red.
Okay.
Which is Powell Place Building Center LLC?
My first glance at the documents did not indicate that these were access easements not led to the device, but Mayor Perry said there was one, so...
The original set of plans didn't have it, just because it was being designed, but the recent plans to, that was one of the comments, and we have addressed that, there will be easements put on place as part of a subdivision plan that'll take place. But there are proposed easements for the pond, for the access, cross-access, and, you know, the utilities that are going in the area.
Thanks.
Any further questions?
Jeff, do we have policies, procedures, mechanisms in place to assure ongoing maintenance or management of such stormwater BMPs?
Yes, I do believe that there would be a stormwater agreement that would have to be filed with the town.
Okay.
That there would be annual inspections of that stormwater device, and that would be given for it.
Great. And to yourself or to the applicant, we have had concerns registered to ourselves as commissioners and the mayor, and we, some of us have individually also brought our own concerns about land-clearing practices and disposal of the debris, the resulting debris. Can you speak to those concerns at all?
Yeah, I'm not sure how, I mean, there's no existing impervious areas that are going to be removed, to worry about taking care of that kind of debris. Everything that will come off the site will be vegetative in nature, so, you know, I'm not sure what their means or methods are, or what their plans are for disposing of that, but obviously, it's going to be within any kind of demolition permits or clearing permits or anything, I guess.
The concern specifically has been about burning one site.
On your landscaping sheet, I noticed there were some plants I was not just terribly familiar with, but just wanted to make sure that we had local, non-invasive landscape species.
Right, it's T R specifications.
Okay. Any further questions? Is there action recommended here, approval of the project subject to local and state permitting? Michael Fierko moves, Jeff Farrell second. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. The next item on Old Business is our Unified Development Ordinance. We've now received Module Two, and I think I saw Roger in the back, and Jeff Jones?
Yep, so I'm going to introduce Roger, he's with Clearing Associates, he's our UDO consultant. And we have received Module Two, Friday was a week ago. And this module covers four and five, where the previous module covered the remaining parts of the UDO draft. Four is our environmental and open space standards, and some of the questions that you had for this site plan tonight may be addressed in some of those environmental standards like tree protection in the future. We might have to do a pre-survey and keep something, or, you know, make sure that there's some thought to the land clearing that might be happening on the site. Article Five covers developmental standards, anywhere from signage to how buildings look to parking and loading standards. And Roger's going to give you an overview of the work so far, and then we're going to go through a review process, much like Module One. And we'll be working with the UDO Technical Advisory Committee and the planning board to review the document along with you all at our joint work sessions that will start back up in August. And I anticipate that this might be the August topic, we'll have to see when we get closer to that day. But Roger's here, he will take over and give you an overview.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor, members of the town board, a pleasure to see you again, and delighted that you're here. So Jeff, the... There we go. As Jeff mentioned, we are continuing to work on preparing a Unified Development Ordinance for Pittsburgh, and that was some robust discussion that we had on Module One, and really good comments, and the work session, I thought, between the town board and the planning board was so useful, and I was really grateful that that was scheduled, and we're hoping to do something similar with Module Two. So the, my presentation tonight is to, for those who haven't, aren't that familiar with the project, to give a very brief overview about the UDO initiative, give a quick summary on the issues that were covered in Module One, and then jump into Module Two, which is where we are right now. Identify some of the key issues that we think you're going to be wanting to talk about, and then talk about next steps. So that's the plan for tonight. So, the project overview, again, for those who have not been following it too closely, Pittsburgh currently has a wide variety and array of ordinances and regulations, and the purpose of Unified Development Ordinance is to bring those together. And the, so we came in to you and talked about the, how to start this project, what do we cover. We prepared for you a code assessment, a evaluation of your current array of regulations with commentary about where we thought some things needed to be changed or adjusted. And that had some good discussion, gave us some direction there. Then we told you we'd be doing this draft in two modules. First one dealing with administration, provisions, zoning districts, uses that are allowed in each district, procedures and definitions, which are very important, we had a lot of discussion about that. So now we're starting Module Two, which has two articles, one dealing with development standards, as Jeff mentioned, and one dealing with environmental and open space standards. Following the same process, we'll have for Module Two, like we had for Module One, we will consolidate everything into a full draft UDO, which we'll then submit and take forward out to the public in work sessions and on to public hearing. So that's where we are. The key issues that came out of the code assessment, and this has been kind of our guiding principles all along as we've been doing our work on this, improve user friendliness of regulations, improve procedural efficiencies, refine plan development regulations, preserve downtown character, establish gateways and treatments for gateways, modernize the zoning districts and district standards, promote conservation of natural resources, very important, and improve development quality, overall, also very important. So, the, one more piece of background, we have been maintaining... So, the, one more piece of background, we have been maintaining a project website. It's, it's accessed through, can be accessed through the town's website or by itself, pittsburghudo.com. And what we have on there is the products, so the example, Module One, the presentations have been made, the comments have been made, and then upcoming events, what, when is the next time this is going to be discussed, and so on. We also have a, invite people to give us their email addresses, and we've been able to keep up with people who want to hear everything and want to know when the next piece is coming through email as well. So that's been, that's been successful. The UDOs, we've told you previously, will be organized into ten articles, general provisions, the definition of the zoning districts themselves, uses, what are allowed in which districts, and then environmental and open space standards, site development standards, non-conformities, you recall that was a key issue we discussed in Module One. We had a lot of talking in Module One about the Chapter Seven administrative and review authorities and what kinds of things could be improved there, development review procedures, enforcement, and then interpretation and definitions, which is critical to the functioning of the ordinance. So this Module Two focuses on the environment and open space and development standards. So that's what we're, that's where we are right now. So what you have in front of you is this document, which is Articles Four and Five, and a couple of things I wanted to say about it, kind of as teasers to get, kind of get our thoughts going in the direction of, help us feed into discussions that we're going to be having on this. The general approach here, as was the case before, is to carry forward from your existing regulations, those provisions which work now, and just carry them forward, and adjust, propose adjustments where needed, and then add new components that aren't in your regulatory array right now, or we think those are needed. And as we mentioned before, there are hundreds of footnotes in these modules. What we've done is to, every time there is an idea that's introduced, we put a footnote to say, this is simply carry forward from what you already have, or this has been adjusted in this way, or this is new, and here's why it's included. So all those footnotes are part of this draft, and will go away once the UDO is fully adopted and implemented. So, Article Four, talking about environmental and open space standards. There are new sections in there, and Jeff has already mentioned tree preservation, which is a major new topic, and we've got a lot that we are offering to put on the table for consideration. Also, a new section we've got in here is green building incentives, so building in some, some definitions of what are environmentally friendly building practices and site development practices, and then building in some incentives for people who are developing land or buildings going above and beyond the minimum requirements. We're carrying forward with just minor changes, things about floodplains, our carrying buffers, stormwater management. Major changes we've got are in open space and recreation areas and in buffers and landscaping. So that's, and we'll be describing all of those to you when we get talking about Article Four. Couple of words about Article Five. There are new sections in Article Five that you don't have now on screening and fences, commercial design, and what I think is a pretty big issue, neighborhood compatibility, focusing on the edges between residential and non-residential development and managing that transition better than has been the case before. We're carrying forward with minor changes, your current regulations about site layout, utilities, landscaping, lighting, signs, I'm going to talk about signs again in a moment. And then we are, and then some of the major changes we've got going forward, access and circulation, a strong new set of rules about connecting developments and connectivity, and, and non-vehicular transportation, multimodal transportation, circulation provisions. Parking, we've got a lot to suggest in the way of different approaches to parking, and then pocket neighborhoods, which is something we've talked about before, that where we are making some significant recommendations to change. So, that's kind of just a preview of coming attractions. Here is Roger's list of what I think are some of the key issues we're going to be wanting to talk about. So again, this is, this is just my suggestions to help pique everybody's interest and get us going. For Article Four, new tree provisions, those are going to be really interesting to talk about, and I think that they're badly needed, and talking about focusing on tree canopy, preservation of canopy, focusing on preservation of specimen trees, and then a big one is protection of trees during construction development site. Another issue is expanding open space and public recreation standards. We've got some ideas for you there. I already mentioned incentives for incorporating green development standards as development moves forward, and new standards to promote connectivity between sites and developments and multimodal transportation. Some of one of the things I think are going to be key in Article Five are the adjusted parking requirements, allowing more flexibility on parking, looking for ways that the amount of impervious surface it's used for parking can be minimized, and accommodating alternative approaches to be in parking requirements. And I think that that's going to be pretty interesting, also some new, we're going to be proposing some new buffer standards and requirements. Changes to pocket neighborhoods, we want to try and, pocket neighborhoods, I continue to believe is a great idea, but needs some tweaking to make it work in Pittsburgh, including attention to the outside edges like outside buffers, and the process of making it a specially use permit instead of something that's permitted by right. And then, this last pull, what I want to talk about for just a moment, sign regulations. In our code assessment, we, we wrote and suggested that our approach to signs would be to take your existing regulations, update them where they needed to be, and, and make them more usable, and, and then build in the new provisions that are required because of federal and state legislation and litigation, case law. It's becoming increasingly clear to me that this is a topic that we might want to discuss more, that we've been hearing that there are, there is sentiment for changing your approach to sign regulations. We haven't in Module Two, but it's something to talk about, whether we want to, whether you want to change your approach to how you, how you consider signage on-premises, off-premises signage in Pittsburgh. So what we've got in Module Two carries over mostly intact your approach to signs and sign regulations, but when we get to talking about it, we'll have some additional ideas to put on the table, see if there's, if there's something, a new approach that you want to designs. So, the next steps, we are currently working on the making revisions to Module One. There's one piece that you still haven't seen but are going to by early, mid-July, and that's the resource conservation overlay district. That belongs in Article Two, and you might remember that when we were looking, talking about Article Two, we're saying, that still needs some work, and we're, and we're still working on that. So I, my intent and hope is that over the next couple of weeks, by mid-July, you will have, delivered to you a draft resource conservation overlay district that fills in a number of issues, particularly the recommendations of the committee that you had established, bringing your recommendations. So that's, that's a coming attraction, but my hope is that we will have that in your hands early enough so that when we get to the joint work sessions, you'll have a chance to look at it, we can talk intelligently about it. We'll have joint work sessions with you and the Planning Board, and Jeff has mentioned Technical Committee. Then we will make revisions to Module Two, similar to what we're doing right now with Module One, combined with Module One, and have a, have a full draft UDO that we can take out to the public, hopefully this fall. So, that's, that's what I have to say, and I'm pleased that we are taking this next step forward, and I'm looking forward to the discussions we'll be having with you and the Planning Board and the public.
Any other questions for Roger Walden?
Well, we had several meetings on Module One, and it sure felt to me that we had plenty, plenty more to talk about. So I see you're making revisions to Module One. I, for one, I think provided with you with several comments.
Yes, very helpful.
And I think other folks will have done the same, and of course, we're very curious to know how you responded to those comments, because I think it's important for us to know that there was contribution made and consideration for our input made, so.
So maybe that could be included as a topic for discussion in one of these work sessions.
I think it'd be great if you walked through the feedback you got and how you addressed it.
I think it's a great idea.
Any other questions? Thank you, Roger Walden.
We're looking forward to this conversation. Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is the Chatham Park Additional Element Review by John Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Kind of started this, this conversation off earlier tonight with some of our guest speakers, and then some thoughts and conversation about Advisory Committee. So staff put together some thoughts on where we are in the process and how we started, where we, where we came from. The Additional Elements was submitted to the town on May third, and staff has been reviewing these this middle. And I've created a sort of a working chart for us to consider tonight and in the future for each element. And the chart is broken into the element itself, and then I've broken the, the element into whether, what kind of category it is, and I can go through that, and then who is part of that review team, in staff's opinion, and is their consultant suggested for that particular element. The category column is broken into three types of ordinances or exceptions. I see, staff's opinion, there are two elements that aren't ordinances or conditions or legal ease type language, and that is development phasing and public facilities. Much of the, those, that's in that category will be things that the town accepts from the developer of Chatham Park that will impact future facilities, needs for the town. And a lot of the, a lot of those two elements could potentially be duplicated in both sections, because phasing might have some information about public facilities and vice versa. Second, we have three elements that have, that are sort of policy in nature, policy slash afford, uh, policy slash ordinance, and those are public art, affordable housing, and transit. And those are broader scopes of, of elements that don't necessarily go to the nuts and bolts of how development will occur in Chatham Park, but goes to their intent and their, again, the policies that the town in Chatham Park and maybe other organizations agree to, to help facilitate some of these elements. Lastly is the, the one that gets to the nuts and bolts of how development will occur in Chatham Park, and those are open space, tree protection, landscaping, stormwater, parking and loading, signage, lighting. Those are all similar of what you might find in what Roger has put together for us in the UDO, and specifically in Module Two, that he kicked off for us tonight. Each of these elements has a reviewer, and those could be anywhere, any makeup of staff, staff only, staff and community stakeholders, or staff, community stakeholders, and consultants. I can tell you that I've shared with you in the past couple of meetings, the staff has reached, has started reaching out to community stakeholders who either a member of the board or myself thought that those would be good folks to bring into the conversation. Those three currently are Habitat for Humanity, Jared Wharton gave us feedback and provided you all with a letter recently. Chatham County Council, Arts Council, that was Nina Harrison, and she has provided feedback and some good guidance and direction on where to go and get some policy information. And then lastly, we met with the Chatham County Conservation Partnership, and we met with Catherine Dantinger, Nancy Stares, and Brooke Masa, those, those three individuals with Chatham County Conservation Partnership. And they've been very helpful, all three of those organizations have been very helpful with staff reviewing those sections that I've asked them to help review. I see there are a couple of elements that staff is suggesting that are broader topics that would be beneficial for the town to bring in some consulting work. That would be affordable housing, because that is a, a topic that, that generates a lot of discussion, and we need to be able to hear from not only the affordable, the Habitat for Humanity model, but there's other models out there. And public facilities, and I think Brian has some, some ideas on, on someone assisting him with the review of that and the impacts of public facilities, and some future planning for the town that we need from there. I didn't suggest consultants on a number of these, especially in the ordinance-related category, because we actually already have a consultant. He's Roger. He is writing the town's standards that we will want, when they adopt, that will cover all these elements. And they're, in my opinion, he is our consultant. Because of that, outside of Chatham Park, what we adopt in the UDO, it will be what we want to see there for tree protection and landscaping and parking and loading and signage. So those are, those are things that, I kind of see we already have a consultant there. And there may be other consultants that Brian has on board, such as a financial advisor that's helping him with public facilities and the like. And I can, I'll, I'll end tonight with my start of the presentation, was as we move through the process, we want to be, it's important to remember that at the end of the process, we need to have a clear understanding of how development is going to occur in Chatham Park, through their ordinances and standards that we get to approve in a public hearing legislative review process. I think it's important that I emphasize, as I did when we kicked this off back in May, that this is part of the puzzle. We don't have the entire piece, we don't have the entire documents in front of us, the small area plans, as indicated in the Additional Elements, will have further details, and that makes it hard to review this document when, when the element itself indicates more is coming. So I think having the small area plans in concert with the Additional Elements would help with the review process. And I'm not unsure when that's going to come, but in the next couple of months is what I've heard. I think it's, it doesn't help staff to be able to give constructive criticism on their project when we don't have all the answers or all the desires of the developer. They have been holding weekly meetings the last three weeks where they've been going over their elements, and some of the things that are shared at the weekly meetings are in the small area plans, and we don't have all that to be able to review. And I think they understand that from the public, public meetings, and it's my understanding that several elements may be changing because of things they've heard, things they have reconsideration on. So through this review process, I'm going to have a conversation with Chatham Park starting tomorrow, because I have no bi-weekly meetings with them, as to if you know an element may be changing, and changing wholesale changes, what do we need to do to, to get that information in front of the public and us to be able to react to that? It's hard to react to something we don't know that's there, and I think that it could be given to us, even if there's duplications of verbiage, words, language, maps in the Additional Elements to small area plans. language, maps in the additional elements to small area plan. I think if you need to be able to use the small area plans to tell the story, we need to encourage to do that, Chatham Park to do that. I know when we first received it back in May and we distributed it out, I heard from a number of people that this wasn't what I thought it was going to be. And I think that is an ongoing comment and it may be that we need to say to the developer, maybe we need to take another look at this and come back to us instead of the town maybe doing all the work for them, just to say this isn't good, maybe we need to rewrite this element. We understand you're probably going to do that anyway. All the while, we can sort of get our game plan together on some of these elements like affordable housing. What is the town's response going to be? Because not only Chatham Park, but other developments in town, what is going to be our long-term policy and ordinances if we go there on affordable housing, public art, transit? We can't think of Chatham Park as being the only player in these elements and these town building functions. We need to think about those as well. But we need to think of them as a town in a whole and not just Chatham Park. So we could maybe ask them to do a better job on their supplemental while we're doing a better job getting a handle on what we actually want. That's where the community reviewers might be able to help out, where a consultant would be able to get, give us guidance on if we can go down this path, this is what you should ask for, this is what you should look for. Or suggestions that we might be able to give on affordable housing or public art or transit or something like that. We'll advertise for the, for the community stakeholders or the community advisory board in the next couple of weeks, we'll do that and then hopefully have a list of applicants by the 25th meeting. We have two, a month, but since this meeting, we won't meet again until it's 25th. And we can kind of go from there. Hopefully, I will have more to tell you from a Chatham Park perspective as to small area plans or taking elements out of this middle and giving us a second draft of that. And we can go from there.
Thank you.
I certainly would appreciate knowing if there are elements that are going to be rewritten wholesale because I'm digging in and if there's going to be substitution, yeah, I'd like to know before I get in the weeds on that.
No, I agree.
Can you do?
Yeah. That's, that's going to be all my agenda for tomorrow, just to discuss.
This may be a question from Chatham Park. What is the status of the development agreement?
Development agreement is being written now. We have six attorneys working on it. Hopefully have it submitted, we have to have it submitted by the end of December. So hopefully be a few months before that. It's very complicated.
I appreciate that. And you know, when I look at the list that Jeff's put together and I think of development, phasing and public facilities, I think they, those kinds of things can be wrapped up and associated with a development agreement, which would be very helpful, I think, to have in talking about those items.
Correct. A lot of this is what comes first, chicken or the egg? We were prepared to submit our small area plan and we're told you have to submit the elements first because the small area plan is based on the elements. So we stopped work on small area plan and got the elements in. And as some statements been made, we're going to make some changes. We're going to make changes right up to your, to you vote on it. So there could be changes to any of these elements right up to the vote. We don't plan on making wholesale changes to, you know, the entire element, there are going to be some word changes, things that we've got feedback on, there will be changes. What we would like to know, you know, maybe go through the public hearing and hear what some of the things people got questions on and what you got questions, so we can make some changes toward a final stakeholders meeting or whatever. What we're having trouble with is there's no schedule. We don't have a schedule. So we would like for the staff or somebody to come back and say, we're going to have this meeting here and this meeting here and the stakeholders meeting here, the consultant's got to have his report in by, you know, August 31st or something. So we, we request that their staff comes up with some type of schedule so we know what's, you know, we can prepare for it and know when the meetings are and adjust us to be available to you.
Yeah. I can. I think that it is possible, but I think we'd have to ask staff to work on that. One of the things I think about when we plan to form a citizens advisory committee is exactly that and giving them a charge and give them a schedule. So I think we need to work on that as well and figure out what we think is possible as a timeframe and develop a schedule.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you.
Jeff, when you make mention of staff, I think you had a, well, you listed planning, engineering, parks, legal and administration.
Yes.
Add to that list.
Yeah.
And, because I don't know if public works is included in administration.
They're not. John is in our office now and he has a copy of this as well and I would hope that he would be giving me comments along with Fred. So he and Fred are working in collaboration together on their comments.
Yeah, right. I think he's in an important perspective.
Yeah.
That we want to, we definitely want his input. Others that I think of is I'd like for fire department, I'd like the police department to review and provide us some feedback on their thoughts. I'm more specific. On the additional elements.
All of them.
Once they feel they have concern about, I know that there's always conflict or tension between landscape requirements and lighting requirements and the police department. They're like, no trees and everything lit. So no hiding holes.
Much without the age.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, I'm trying to. Aye, Peter.
I think police department, fire department, my mind kind of goes to public.
So. I think. You know, I think Chatham County Schools should be weighing in.
And I, and I do believe that they have been working with the school system and I think just an expansion on that maybe is needed.
Now, the planning board is having, well, I would like the planning board's input and we've got a parks and rec advisory board that I think will have valuable input as well. So I would just like to make those suggestions to hear from those very capable people as well.
I think I'm just going to, I think one of the big concerns people have of maintaining our culture as we grow and the public art is also a very complex issue, like what students are, who should decide on, there's just so many issues that could be raised. And I could see that, my comp, if anyone would attempt to come up with some, I don't know what the board thinks about that. I don't think the Arts Council is studying those issues right now, but I don't think they have experience creating policies on art. I'm just going to add that as a question. Is that much important?
Well, Jeff mentioning that Roger would be the consultant.
Yeah, the, the public art one is definitely a broader topic that won't be covered in the UDO and if there's.
We're thinking he is a consultant that we can ask questions about. He was former director in Chapel Hill.
Right.
Where they've got a public art program. So he might be somebody who could provide.
And I've had a lot of articles talking about that. And I think it's wrong to be concerned about moving that.
Yeah, and, and I met on Thursday with Gina from the Arts Council and I would be glad to be able to give you those comments and to Chatham Park those comments as well. There were basically broad comments or questions that need to be raised through the process and then gave ideas to the town as to what organizations might be able to help us develop some of those policies.
Anything further for Jeff Jones?
And again, this is staff's stab at trying to categorize the elements. I think as we get further into it over the next couple of weeks with thoughts on the advisory committee, we can refine this as well and shoot ideas to each other and come back on the 25th with another memo and another discussion. Yeah, I'll, Jeff, I'll reserve my thoughts for written feedback I'm going to be delivering to you.
Thank you.
All right. Under new business, we have, I guess, the last of Jeff's.
Yeah, I thought it was done. Take care of it. We have a water, wastewater allocation request from a local business that is opening. Let me get the staff report out here. The location is 854 East Street. It's a currently a commercial building there. It's at the corner of East and sort of by the post office area. The applicant is proposing to open up a child daycare facility in there. She has applied with the state to run, operate a child daycare facility there for 17 students. And with that 17 students and four employees, her wastewater allocation comes out to be 500 gallons. And staff is recommending proposal to approve this request that, including this request, the total remaining gallons per day is 65,295 gallons. And that, that number is always fluctuating based off flows and when things come online for COs and things like that. So we're around the 65,000 gallons per day model right now.
And staff is recommending the approval of this?
We are, yes.
Is there a motion or further questions?
Jeff, how'd you get to 500? 21 people?
It's, it's based off of the state's two T rules for daycare facilities and.
25 gallons per.
Not for a daycare. Didn't bring the actual engineered document, but there was an engineered document. I can look it up real quick before the end of the meeting, but I did verify that it's not 25 for a daycare facility. And they're not doing, I don't think they have a kitchen facility that they're doing there, but, yeah, yeah.
Motion to be approved?
Moved by Michael Fioke, second to backhand with Alvin. As a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's closed. Carrie, you may.
Thank you. I'll, I'll.
All right. Moving then to the budget workshop, the review of the operating budget. Both Brian Grusbeck and Kevin Michin will be working with us on further questions or refinements from our last meeting.
Yeah. Give a five minute break?
Moved by John Bonnet, second to backhand with Alvin, that we take a five minute break. Let's try to get back together after we.
Take breath. We've lost considerable.
I think we're at the, at the budget.
Thank you. I think we started.
Oh, we need a motion to go back in. Thank you. Could we have a second to Michael Fioke's motion? Those in favor of going back into session.
Aye.
It's closed. If we have it unanimous, we've lost a considerable number of our, of our audience.
Do we need to add more charts and graphs?
I think just the word financial is enough to drive most people, right?
Okay. If we're good to go, we've been talking about the budget in one form or another since, since I think at least as far as, as far as this packet of info and better seedings and all pay. I apologize if this is not, I think, as Mr. Fioke mentioned, some of them were in binders and so I think the final version, or some of them, excuse me, some of them are three hole punch for a binder. The final version that you get, I would like to, like I believe we've done in previous years, give you in a binder format similar to what we did last year with tabs, separate tabs for the financial reports. So the version that you see here tonight that's in your packet is not the one, I mean, you're welcome to keep it and do whatever you want to with it, but this will not be the final, the final pretty one that you get if you are to approve the budget here shortly, soonly, within the next, or at least within the next couple of days.
Right. Maybe just one clarification about the hole punch. I was not thinking of this. I was thinking of the summary sheets we get every month.
Oh, the financial. Oh, my bad. Okay.
Those are, it's like great, I slot it in my tab, it's fantastic.
Okay. And yeah, and just like those.
I think there were just like two of them.
And same thing, it's just like I had said before is, you know, as we go, as we move forward with future monthly updates, those will be three hole punch, you put those in this magic binder.
I really appreciate the magic binder.
Okay.
Yes. Great. Enjoy it.
And that's my fault. I did not put my punch holes.
Okay, so without, without further ado, the budget, I think if we keep, if we keep on this pace, the, you know, we'll have streets of gold because I think every iteration of the budget has improved. The, we were able to take a look at the motor vehicle tax calculations such as it was from previous years and again, taking a look at history and how we're actually receiving, you know, what, what the performance of that line is and that. We've, we've been under budgeting by a considerable amount. What we did, what we did with this version of the budget we have here tonight is to increase the motor vehicle tax by a little over $99,000 to better reflect actual receipts. And I don't know Heather, if you want to say anything else about, about that?
No, I mean, no, just, you know, if you see in the sheet, the previous two actions, you know, are around 233,000. This current year, we are on trend to be at that much where we had only budgeted for this year. this year, 115,000. And looking at the motor vehicle valuations that we've received from Chatham County and based on our tax rate and stuff, we, that's what we would be, you know, for the next year, so we just adjusted that.
There were two budgets ago, we received a really conservative calculation and so I think last year's budget carried forward that same calculation and so Heather took another look at it and, you know, and I think just, you know, based on performance, we were able to, we were able to uptick that a little bit, which obviously helps us in every area of the budget. We, to recall, the last, the last version of this budget you had received, we were looking at a fund balance appropriation of right around $80,000. In other words, we were going to take approximately $80,000 from our general fund, fund balance we have in order to balance the budget on the general fund side. So in this case, what we've done is we've essentially, and we'll get to it here in another part, we've increased on a couple of, couple of minor parts of the budget, we've increased in app allocations and a couple of minor parts that we'll point out, including Main Street program. And submitting, and for the first time since, since I've been here, for the first time that I can tell in twenty-two years, could be estimating a completely balanced budget going into the budget approval process. You guys are good.
I hope that there were some high fives exchanged in the offices when this was revealed.
Well, it's kind of like, that's always what I shoot for anyway. I don't mean to like downplay that, but yeah, I hear you. Yeah, it was a very nice, nice surprise. So administration, we did, and we don't, we won't dwell on these too much because I think some of these, a lot of these, a lot of these figures are heavily influenced by when you make an adjustment. It kind of creates a butterfly effect as far as, as far as like insurance or 401s, but we increased 8800 dollars to account for some cross training that we had on customer service and billing side to better reflect their current skills, the current skill levels of the three, of the three individuals we have in Heather's department, particularly in lieu of Nancy's absence for three or so months that she was out. And so I think this puts us in a pretty good position for a few years and so we have the wiggle room to do it and so we're plugging in about 8800 dollars to make, to make that happen. Within engineering, it's increased, but Heather's going to have to articulate this a little bit better than I can. This is actually not so much an increase from the general fund as it is an increase in the general funding, in the parts into engineering to better reflect roles and responsibilities that are related to the department.
Yeah, so we currently have particular roles allocated only under Chatham Park. However, the people that are a part of those roles do not only do Chatham Park things in the jobs. So we want, I wanted to better reflect that and so what, what I did was I moved a portion of our inspector who was totally under Chatham Park into the engineering section because she does inspections for other things that are not Chatham Park related. In addition to that, you'll see it under several areas, so I also did that under planning. I moved, I actually moved part of Jeff's position over to Chatham Park because he does a lot of Chatham Park stuff, but then I took part of the planner two position, which is Victoria, and moved her back under planning because she was totally allocated under Chatham Park. And so I did that because we just need to better reflect what's actually, should be allocated to Chatham Park and what should be allocated to the other departments.
And the planner two positions, I indicated earlier in the meeting when I introduced Victoria, she's, she was hired by way of, by way of income that we do receive from Chatham Park payments. However, because she's not going to be doing, in fact, I think fifty, the 50-50 split between, between the Chatham Park portion of the general fund and the planning portion of the general fund is probably optimistic. It's probably going to be a lot less Chatham Park than that, if that makes any sense. She's going to be doing a lot more of the rudimentary questions on decks and chickens and goats and things like that that, you know, maybe don't have anything to do hopefully at this point with Chatham Park. So, you know, this is going to be a, this is going to be a, it all comes out of the same fund, but at the same time, because there's that agreement in play, we want to make sure that we're right sizing, we're right sizing all of those allocations. I think we're a little closer to being able to do that. Police, we did manage to, hopefully Chief Cressfield doesn't throw anything at me, but we were able to decrease that amount due to a certification that we had for an officer in the police department. We had that, we had an officer receiving about a $1,600 increase due to anticipated certification. That officer resigned in the last month or so, so we backed that figure out. You know, we'll certainly, you know, if we have to readjust that at some point here in the near future, that's going to be a good problem to have and we'll take a look at it at that point if we need to.
Brian, one question, did we not, did we lose that police officer to another?
No.
Just about it.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I just, I like that at all. Recreation, we did increase, as I mentioned earlier, $50,000 as an additional line item from the last iteration of the budget you received. Now we're looking at $30,000 for the Main Street slash downtown program. And that's, that's in addition, if you look in the party, if you look in the recreation portion of your budget, you'll see that there's also another line item there for, there is another line item there for holiday decorations and there's another events line item that I forget the name of it. It's in addition to that, I know. With Mr. Fiocco, I prepared subfigures on, on that, which I think are, on the overall needs of the program, which are very helpful and we can get into that later if you want, but, but at this point in time, we are budgeting that line for, as an increased investment in downtown and in downtown activities. And we also did, I believe, keep the sound improvement program intact as well, so.
The Christmas parade has zero, so what? The Christmas parade comes out of the, the holiday and the events and programming?
Okay, I figured it was.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's the case for a couple of...
Yeah, with like the last few years, just what it was.
To the, to the Chatham Park, as I kind of related earlier, we did decrease that a little bit due to reallocations of some positions and so there was a spike to health insurance retirement 401 ripple on that as well. Enterprise fund, again, insurance adjusted those to reflect actual premiums for the upcoming year. Admin side, increased 9,000 on that side that is related to the increase that I mentioned earlier with our customer service operator, billing, customer service operations portion of administration. So we were able to absorb that partially in enterprise because a good majority or a good portion of, of those activities are broken out of enterprise, enterprise fund expenses as well. Slight spike adjustment for water treatment. The wastewater treatment decreased 8100 dollars due to a health insurance adjustment. Heather, do you have any comments on that? If you're on a plane, kind of like...
Oh, that was because, so I dropped our health insurance estimate for an employee that...
That's right.
For a position that where we don't need to have it applied.
Right, okay.
So...
That's...
Because our, the health insurances are based on age, so the higher in age, the higher the fee, so I was able to drop it down.
Okay. Slight spike adjustment in utilities and, and so those are the major, those are the major changes. Now, the last, the last, last discussion, we had some, we had some talk of board salary adjustments. And so you had, if I recall correctly, you had requested that we pursue some comparisons with Hillsborough, Silas City, Sanford. We, you'll recall from previous iterations of the budget that we had proposed a 2% increase to your current, 2.5% increase to your current earnings, such as they are, and proposed, I think initially I had proposed a per diem amount for each additional meeting that you would attend. I think mayor was at X amount and board was at Y amount. And we budgeted based on 14 additional meetings. What, what I'm proposing, I'll show you the numbers here from Hillsborough and Silas City and Sanford. What I propose, what I'm proposing is that in addition to the 2% increase that we just, if you so choose, and you can certainly go back to my original proposal if you'd like, but if you so choose to accept the increase, the per diem increase meetings as if they were just plugging in your budgets, in other words, regardless of how many meetings, how many of those 14 meetings you attend, we're just going to, we're just going to plug those figures into your, into the budget as if you were attending those meetings, regardless of how many of those meetings you attend, and that will be your, that'll essentially be your increase, which I believe is upwards of 40% of what?
Right.
40% additional from what you're making right now.
Right, the increase is 40%, that includes the 2.5% increase.
Let's take a look at Hillsborough. Their, their total, total general fund budget amount is 9.3 million. Their mayor makes 8,400 dollars per year and each commissioner makes 7,200 dollars per year. They have five commissioners. This is Silas City and I think maybe I have forwarded, the former did do this earlier. Some of the other figures I haven't forwarded yet, but they have, their, their general fund amount is, believe it or not, only a little bit above ours, 5.3 million. Their mayor makes considerably more than their mayor pro temp or their commissioners. Mayor pro temp, 5 point, or 5,000, commissioners above 4,500. Now, the thing, I did do that for Hillsborough, I took that out, Heather, I apologize. The, I included Silas City tax rate, which is, which is a little bit above ours down there at the bottom. Percentage total of general fund, I won't beat this into the ground too much, but this is, this is taking a look at the total amount of money that they spent, that they spend on governing board as percentage of their general fund, if that makes any sense.
On, on just the salaries, the salary spike of that type of stuff of the general, of the governing board, not the whole governing board.
Trying to give you some scale for what they actually spend as a portion of their budget on, on, you know, on your earnings. So Sanford, considerably different, and I don't, it might, might have been helpful that population here to a certain extent, but Sanford, I think this, this is largely indicative of population difference compared to the other communities. They have a general fund amount of about 27 million. The mayor's making 15,000 a year and then the mayor pro temp and council members are making about 11,000. They spend quite a bit more as a portion of their general fund and, but their tax rate is also considerably more than, than either or any of the other communities that we're operating. Now, Pittsburgh, you can see our general fund proposed this year is 4.2 million. What I would be proposing is, is the mayor receiving, the mayor receiving an allocation of 6200 per year and the commissioners at 5200 per year, which again is, is a, is a pretty decent raise from what you're currently receiving. Our, you can see what our tax rate, our tax rate is compared to the others and our, what we would be spending as a portion of our general fund, I think, is lower too. It's out in line with Silas City. And again, I apologize for not having Hillsborough on there. So that's what we have plugged into the budget right now. If that's, if that's on track with what you guys are considering, I mean, I, I'm a biased source, but I think you guys put in the time and the work and as you can see, I think that, I think it falls into line, I think, with the other communities at this point in time. I think certainly, feedback?
Well, I've been the one that's raised this up several times, but yes, this is more designed, what I, what I would discuss in this step of the, the extra, ex amount of money for making. So I don't have any problem with that. We're not here for the money anyway, for the first quarter year, but it is quite a bit of time consuming, reading and all this other, extra policy costs and negative plus if we get to. But I would like to say one thing too, and that has come through members, I maybe, we may need to think about something for our planning board. Some type of payment in lieu for them for their reading and going through, they're saying documents and we all.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't include anything. Admittedly, we didn't include anything in the planning board, Frank, I mean, they go through some pretty, pretty hefty materials and I think they, they take a lot of heated times, generally speaking. I mean, I know they added some additional meetings, so it's probably fair that they could receive something, generally speaking, they don't put in what you guys do. Nor is it the same type of decision making that you guys made. So I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that they're, you know, entitled to what you guys made of the administration.
Oh, I don't believe it, of course not.
What do they, what do they make actually? Is it?
It's a, it's a per...
It's per week, it's $25 per week, yeah.
We can come back to you with another, maybe no reason why, we could come back to you with something and adjust according to what you're...
Well, I'm encouraged by these figures because, and I'm glad to see that it is within the percentage points of general fund of other municipalities. Because I've certainly felt as though we've been putting in a lot of times, especially in the last couple of years.
I would say that way.
It is, it's, it's going to get better, but so I think it's a step in the right direction and I certainly appreciate it.
Well, yeah, and at no time did I ever want to, I just, I was trying to come up with something I think originally would, would, you know, would recognize that was the first thing that popped in my head, recognize the additional meetings that we're throwing in here. And I just, you know, so we can, we'll plug this in, it's, you're in, you know, it's, it's in line, as Commissioner Fiocco said, with the other communities and I, I think it's, I think it's well earned. So that being the case, that's plugged in the budget, if you approve this budget, then this is what you're looking at right here for this next fiscal year. The, the other thing, the other thing that we could, we can get into and I can send this to you later because I don't really like, I don't really like how this is printed out, or I don't really like how this is displayed and I don't have these slides printed out, but I did a breakdown of the last, or I should say, Heather and I worked on a breakdown of the last two, basically the last, well, up to date as far as Chatham Park expenses and breaking out where they, where they're being allocated and to, and, and so you can see that, you can see where we, in the first, the first year, we, you know, our, our expenses and our, our activities were rather minimal for a few different reasons. We start to pick it up with mainly in professional and contractual, contractual services, we got into a little bit more activity with the hiring of an administrative assistant and inspector. So you can see some engineering, well, when I say inspector, that was essentially what we might as all refer to as the engineer two, which is, Michelle, you've probably seen her around, was occupying the mayor's old office when she first got here before she moved over to Chatham Mills. Has been out and about and inspecting a number of projects and the increased workload kind of compelled us to hire an administrative assistant, so those, those costs were... those, those costs were fairly attributable to Chatham Park in this case, and so that you can see a lot of the other professional and contractual services that we've, that we've added on. In the meantime, all of which probably sounded, have sounded familiar to you at one point or another. The upcoming year, we would anticipate more salaries being added to Chatham Park as, as we get into some full years of the administrative assistant, and then even if we scaled back the inspectors to seventy-five, twenty-five, and then as we discussed earlier, reallocate some of the planner two and planning director salaries, you can see we're, you know, we're attributing about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to Chatham Park right now. We've got some additional professional and contractual services that are being plugged in there on those, and a couple of those, you know, could be adjusted, I may be scaling back communications a little bit as we get into a couple of deliverables, that's probably a little bit high, and then we'll, we'll, as, as we scale back communications, I think I'm gonna adjust later on to, to probably plug in some more financial consultant input on that, on that piece. But as you can see, Summit, Summit is a company that's doing some, some third-party plan reviews, site plan reviews and inspections for us, in addition to the inspector that we have, and then, I'm, I'm not really sure, every so often, there's, there's a comment or a question about how we're not paying or not using hydrostructures enough, which I've never seen at all exemplified in our invoicing or what we're spending, because we're planning on another, well, just from Chatham Park alone, another thirty-five thousand dollars that, that we'll be using for hydrostructures for, let's say, plan and site plan review and inspection, that's mostly in the water end of, of things, to go with the north side water system improvements. You see NetSmart, that's a, NetSmart is, is actually the computer consultant that we have for the new facility. We've, we've attributed a lot of the, a lot of the activities for the new facility, we've started to attribute over to the Chatham Park end, just because if not for Chatham Park, we wouldn't need the new facility, so for the time being, a lot of those expenses can be kind of attributable to Chatham Park, and so.
Excuse me, Brian, when you say new facility, you mean the offices at the mill?
Chatham Mills, yeah, apologies. Yeah, new to us, bigger. So this, this last one down at the bottom, might not be as familiar, fifteen thousand for E E E, and I forget what E E E stands for, but there's a stream classification report that Chatham Park has submitted, and we hired a third party to verify locations, types, and stream information, and so they're going through and making some work on that over the course of the year. So we have, as I, as I mentioned before, we have, we have plenty of, you know, I don't need to, I, I like the term independent and robust that you use, Commissioner Vines last day, so the goal being to, you know, if Chatham Park is affecting our activities as, as much as administratively, you know, possible, we get Chatham Park to take those activities, and this is, these are some examples here. So that's, that's what I have as far as, as far as the, as far as your entertaining slideshow this evening. The other thing that we haven't talked as much about is in the back of your, is in the back of your budget information, which is the, it's another piece that if you choose to approve the budget tonight, we're also asking you to approve, back, I believe it's right on page fifty-seven, where they're about, which is our capital improvement program, and the, the capital improvement, what capital improvement plan, you might hear it referred to as a C I P, is a plan, it's not, it's not necessarily something that's directly reflective of things that, that we're a hundred and fifty percent sure that we're going to buy either this year or planning forward in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, or twenty, but we're trying to project forwards some costs that we'll be, we'll be experiencing not only this year, but in future years, and we also indicate where those, those, where those funding, where the funding will be sourced. So, you know, so, you know, for instance, up at the top, and I apologize, I have it on the screen, but if you go to the top, we have some community house improvements that I believe were, that we're budgeting for in the parks department, and so we've identified fifteen thousand dollars on it. There's, there's some discussion as to whether or not certain expenditures fit the definition of capital improvement plan as we've, as we've laid it out. Typically, for a capital improvement program or plan expenditure, you're looking at expenditure of over fifty thousand dollars. So you can tell some of these things are, are still kind of left over, small expenditures that, and sometimes also too, they're kind of maintenance expenditures, which, which don't necessarily fit capital improvement plan definitions, but the exercise is to allow us to at least plan forward some of these expenses to give you and public a better idea of what staff at least initially anticipates moving forward. Now, one of the things that we, that I identified with, with our RFQ for financial assistance is a more in-depth look at our capital improvement plan, the, that could, you know, one that would actually be a little bit more finance oriented in terms of actually taking, say for instance, fund balance, or taking impact fees, and actually budgeting and planning forward for some of these things in future, you know, so in future years, so, you know, for instance, if we were, you know, if we were looking at a high-priced item that we were going to be anticipating doing in fiscal year twenty twenty, then we would be able to budget forward to have the money by the time twenty twenty will roll out. And so I think that's where we want to be. At this point in time, this is, this is, I hate to say it, more replaceable with a plan, but we do use it for planning purposes, and hopefully it's somewhat helpful to you as well. So if you would have, if, 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 as you look at the possible approval of the budget ordinance in, in this document, also too, please consider approving the capital improvement plan as well. Absent that, any questions, comments, concerns, or redirections you want to propose, we're certainly open to that as well.
Just with your commentary about the capital improvement plan, one thing that comes to mind is, maybe that's something to be working with at the retreat as well.
Yes.
You know, when you're thinking, well, we're a big picture of items, maybe that's an appropriate time to start putting some meat on these things.
Yeah, I think, I think that's pretty good to do. I, I've always been so over focused on this upcoming year, and not so much, you know, future years, and so expanding the retreat discussion would include, you know, a few years on in the future is pretty good. The only other thing that I'd point out too, at the back of your budget, is, is as you see, that we have a net service schedule, we talked a lot more about in previous years. Those numbers are looking a lot better than they were a few years ago when we were in the same spot, and it's a big part of why we're in a better position, particularly on the enterprise fund side, of actually generating gravity for our enterprise fund balance, which I'm not so apologize too much for, since a couple of years ago, it was only a couple of years ago, we took about two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars of enterprise fund balance, and then last year, we took, what was it, about another hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of general fund fund balance, or the balance of the enterprise fund. So this year, we're doing well enough that, that we're actually at least at this point in time anticipating a slight, a slight giveback on the enterprise fund side, which will be helpful, because rebuilding that enterprise fund fund balance is going to be important as we look at, you know, possibly having to work with L G Cs. I think that'll, no pun intended, be helpful.
Well, we've been eyeballing the debt service schedule for several years, waiting for it to go off that clip, just to bring it up.
The lights getting closer.
Yeah.
That's the pleasure of the board.
One question for me. I, I've been really pleased, encouraged, heartened, and intrigued by the many changes that you've been sharing with us as this budget has evolved to this point. And I'm curious, to what extent that's a natural artifact of just changes in day-to-day, month-to-month, week-to-week, month-to-month, or is it also Heather's arrival? Or is it, would you attribute those, those changes, those tweaks, positives and negatives, to all of the complexities that are on your plate right now?
Hopefully, I can come close to answering your question. The, the nature of the changes, they're doing, they're doing parts of a few different things. Oftentimes, we'll get a suggestion to look at this expenditure or that, that expenditure, and in order to do that, you know, we really take a look at, okay, so rather than the, the first alternative for me is to never just say, okay, we're gonna go ahead and increase the general fund contribution, you know, in other words, I don't, I don't want a deficit spend unless it's the last alternative, well, technically, the last alternative is to raise taxes, but I didn't get a, I didn't get any kind of willingness or discussion from Adam and the board like they had in previous years, and so I say the way, it was like more of like a nuclear option than it was the last alternative, so. So we looked at, we looked at finding other parts of the budget in order to, in order to make those, in order to make those accommodations, I guess the challenge that was presented to us this year, admittedly, was trying to find a way to increase the investment that we're making in our downtown, in the central center, also too, taking a look at, taking a look at a few, a few of the other areas that we're having, as, as far as, as far as fitting in the increased, the increased allocation requests for certifications on the police department side, additional position on the police department side, all of those things kind of create challenges for us to find the money, and so I think, you know, Heather constantly poring over, you know, printed copy after printed copy of, of her, not just this document, but the day-to-days, the annual, that's kind of how the thing evolved, like I said, it would right at the beginning, so. And, and as this budget, as I also indicated, as this budget goes through this next fiscal year, you will receive monthly reports, and those monthly reports will give us all, everyone in this room, an idea for how the budget is performing in each, not in each line as you can see here. So we will at times be, be forced to consider adjustments if, if a fund may not be performing as well as we thought it would, or if it's performing even better, or if we have some sort of anticipated expense that comes, then we will have to adjust accordingly. So it's very, unfortunately, at times, it's, it's a very fluid document, so. The idea being that, you know, as, as far as I'm concerned, the idea being that, you know, in, passing, passing the costs and sharing those costs where appropriate, whether it's Chatham Park, or whether it's unspent money, or whatever, finding the money is always more important to me than either increasing the fund balance or increasing the, more quadded sort of, kind of old fashioned that way.
Thank you.
Does that come close to answering your question?
Yeah, well, it was an open-ended question, so.
Yeah.
But I, I really appreciate the apparent thoroughness, and, yeah, it's reassuring.
Well, again, kudos to, kudos to Heather, and, you know, for, you know, for helping, definitely helping find the money, and having another set of eyes and taking a look, and you know, and I think even to a fresh set of eyes, you know, hey, why is this theater operating?
Yeah.
Motor vehicle thing. That probably would have been another pleasant surprise at the end of this fiscal year. But also too, the staff too, the staff has been very, you know, this is a great staff to work with as far as the budget is concerned, and very, very understanding. Percy is, I'm telling you, I've worked with police chiefs that will, you know, that will be very political about their budget, and Percy doesn't do that at all, Percy's a complete team player when it comes to this, and, you know, this, this was a year that we couldn't, we couldn't kick the police department down the road again another year, we had to really start looking at, you know, we got, we got the bones of a good department, we want to keep those bones intact.
I'll make a question that we approved budget.
Second. Moved by Michael Fioke, seconded by Beth Wilson-Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carish unanimously.
I also make a motion to approve the manager's recommended capital improvement.
Okay. Moved by Michael Fioke, seconded by Pamela Waldman. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys too, we appreciate the work you guys and the extra time that you guys put into this, and you did this without scheduling, kind of difficult, you know.
How about that? You snuck it in.
Well, it's really interesting to be, to talk this for the first time, not jump.
And, you know, I suspect that, you know, sometimes more, you know about the budget, maybe next year goes even slower, because now you've got a couple of hours to know more about, you know. You want, you guys, I'm sure you guys will have more questions.
All right. Brian, we then have your manager's update, I was looking, I'm in my packet.
I had, I apologize, I had sent that out with the U N E O.
Oh, that's right, I tracked it.
And I don't even have, I don't even have it in front of me right at all. I will say, it's just, just real quick, if you don't mind, I will just give you a quick update about what's happened with Sanford and the force change. We have, because that was, that was the real beef of it anyway, is that we've had some additional conversations, we've had an additional meeting with Sanford, both staff and financial consultant, Mr. Masick, and in this room, a couple of weeks ago, and we had a presentation with Davenport Company and Consulting on, on some possible, some possible financial deal points that could get us, the real, I guess the real need of it would be, to oversimplify it a little bit, would be to find a rate that is acceptable for Sanford that also takes into account the reservation of wastewater capacity that they would require, and also to help pay down the debt that they have on, that they use to expand their facility, but to do that in such a way that was both fair to us and fair to them. And so Davenport Company ran through some scenarios, Sanford took a look at some of those scenarios, went back, reconsidered, shot back, counterproposal, we're currently evaluating that with Davenport, as well as a couple other narrative deal points in the area. Sanford's gonna be talking about it internally on their end over the course of the next month or so. Regardless of where the deal is at, I would like Davenport to present to this board either in the last meeting, say last meeting in July, the only meeting in July, or drop dead, I don't really want to do this, I guess drop dead, it looks like that meeting in July is way too, way too busy, if we have to sacrifice that presentation, the first meeting in August, we can do it, but I'd rather get you guys up to speed with some of the stuff that Davenport's been talking out, so, because I think you're gonna find it really interesting. So, so we'll be more to come on that. And then also too, I think I said something about that hole up in front of the building.
Yeah.
The, which, I gave you a little bit of background for why that hole was even there, but we're, we're looking to get, if weather cooperates, we're looking to get it done during the week before, I think that might even be optimistic, but we have two other, we have two other similar B M Ps, or stormwater bio, stormwater, basically, they're, they're stormwater retention ponds, or bio retention ponds, that we received some, some grant money for, for design and construction. some grant money for for design and construction oversight. Two of them are going to be located here, one here, one in downtown hall, and then the third one, you might be familiar with, that we've been talking about on the traffic circle on the, we wouldn't ignore it, last corner, so to speak, for the traffic circle. And so, so there's more of those to come. I don't, I think this one probably is a good one to start with because it's, admittedly, it's not something that our guys have had any experience doing. So I think it's, I think it's really good to kind of get that experience out of the way. It's been kind of a fill-in task, so maybe they haven't been giving it one hundred percent of their time when they have been working on it because there are other things pop up and they kind of leave it. Weather has been an issue, but if we get weather cooperating, we should go with that by mid-July at the latest. I also mentioned that, that the county board of commissioners, the county board of education wants to continue joint meetings, they just don't want to do it quarterly, they kind of want to do it semi-annually. And we nailed down a date that seems to work for everybody, for September twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday, at six-thirty P M. in the middle school multipurpose room. And was that, is that the same room we met at last time?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you can, put that, make sure you write that down or put that in your schedule if you can. And so, and we'll have more coming out on that in the future. With that, I guess I'm going to tap out.
Jay Farrell, do we have commissioner concern?
I don't have any further to say.
Could we do some questions on the manager's update? Are you willing to?
I am.
Okay, great. So I'm, as you know, I'm really looking forward to the Davenport presentation either in July or August. You know, my curiosity about the various financial modeling and scenarios. I'm curious, one of our other colleagues, Brian, was me asking about, I don't know enough about public sector finance to describe it exactly, but the flavor of the debt that we might have for the Force Main project, whether it is coming from general fund balance repayments, or enterprise fund repayments, or is it a bond project? And you responded very confidently that it would be too much effort and complexity and cost to go the bond path. And I guess I would just like to see that in one being.
I don't really remember saying that exactly.
Okay.
What we have, what we have is, is an intent from the state of North Carolina to fund this through what's called a revolving loan fund, which is, which is money that would have to be paid back at a much lower than market interest rate. That said, it's not our intention because the bulk of the development being impacted by Chatham Park would not be our intention. Going to that with the understanding that we were, whatever, whatever source of our funding would be, we would be going into that with the understanding that Chatham Park would be essentially carrying the majority of the debt load on this or guaranteeing the insurance that will not be. Guarantee of that would essentially guarantee a payment of that to be, and whatnot would be coming from Chatham Park. However, we process that through on our side, and we'll, we'll work through the system on that with L G C and with our financial advisor, the best way that we can and good to have that up for you.
I would just like for us to have one eye on this project, one eye on the future, so that we're not getting into a reindeer. Hopefully, our, what is it, eight percent debt under state law?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, on general fund, general fund side, the state, and that's not even a hard pass law, they just started getting embouches when you get down to eight percent. We're well over, I think we set, we set actually a policy, a fund balance policy a year and a half ago in Pittsburgh that it'd be about ten percent. And we're, we have to go back and calculate, we're well over that right now.
Please start with the debt limit.
Yeah, definitely. So basically, what I'm concerned about is an opportunity cost with us, even though it's a revolving loan fund with super cheap cost of money, with us taking on the debt for the Force Main, I don't want us to lose the opportunity for other large capital projects like Anute Town Hall, or who knows what has yet to be envisioned that this town recognizes five years from now, we really, really need to invest in, in order to maintain that strength, that center of gravity of the old Pittsburgh as the new Pittsburgh grows around.
Yeah, I don't think the town, I don't think the town hall, debt-wise, I don't think the town hall and, say, Sandra Force Main are going to collide with each other. Because they're kind of coming from different, they would be paid and guaranteed by different revenue sources.
But it still accrues to that debt limit, I believe. So I just, if you could ask Davenport to spend fifteen minutes on it, or whatever it takes, I don't think it's going to be very complex.
Fifteen minutes. I mean, we have, we have another, I have another binder that I just received today on town hall, on potential town hall, so.
Okay. I don't want to belabor.
No.
Just like a little reassurance that we're keeping on both targets and then they're moving, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a former boss of mine liking it, the spinning plates.
Yeah.
Constantly keeping the plate spinning.
Thank you.
That's kind of what we're trying to do.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Matt, do you have any concerns?
I just thought I would share, I've had a meeting this morning with the Arts Council, and we had a gentleman from the covering group, he's developing that first commercial area in Chatham Park. It was really interesting hearing what he had to say. He's very excited about the project, and he's already begun talking with people in the community, he's at the first house today, he's meeting with the Juana tomorrow, he's talking to lots of people, and he really sounds like he wants to incorporate, you know, make sure he's capturing what his spirit and opinion. And what I think that's most interesting about, you've probably heard about this, because I think this mentioned in this editorial article, that they're talking about doing having apartments for, rural apartments for seniors over, for the senior seniors. But he's envisioning this really nice concept of having a performing arts center there in that facility, and along with that, having art studios, and things that's really into sticking next to each other, that complement each other. And he's bringing in a consultant from Pittsburgh to help work on that to create this kind of compatible sort of business there. They're very law board, looking to kind of, I was very impressed with what he had to say about that. Anybody who's interested, personal, none of this is definite, proposed, I guess there's a fifty-fifty chance of getting the burries. They're all different.
Oh, pulsey?
Pulsey.
Oh. I think that's for.
Was it in the newspaper?
He told, he told us.
Did he deliver the same as the D B A?
And I sat at a table and they said, I'm saying.
Oh. I sat at a table, I didn't say that.
Probably earlier.
Alice, cut that. That's great.
Michael, good?
I have.
Yeah, I think it's just really, as I mentioned in response to the briefing you're planning for Davenport Company, just really excited about that. Very curious and eager and want to learn more.
We have in our packages an annual water quality report for your information, and if there's no further commissioner's concerns, we have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Michael Fioco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. We have...